Here. Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Norman?
Here.
Mrs. Inteher?
Here. Mrs. Demarzone will give us the [inaudible 00:01:33]. Please, on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, communication with the school, Mrs. Demarzone.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Harris, members of the Board of Education. It is my pleasure to welcome you tonight to Lincoln School. It is only fitting that we're meeting here tonight, as it's Lincoln's birthday, as you probably already know. At this time, I would like to introduce the very dedicated and child-focused Lincoln staff. Please stand. They are the best group of professionals that you will find anywhere. They work together to navigate through this time of educational change, and it has been my privilege to be their leader for fifteen years. Lincoln also enjoys an exceptional partnership between home and school, longstanding tradition, as I know Rosemary would concur. Our strong PTA is led this year by Mrs. Tammy Crowe. I'd like to introduce her. Through their help and support, we enrich our students' experience in countless ways. Just in the last month, we have had Science Olympiad, a Pancake Breakfast, a Cultural Arts Assembly, a Book Exchange, Hand Food Drive, a Variety Show, Trivia Night, and Assignment Auction. So this partnership, you can see, is alive and well, and is a big reason for the sense of community that we enjoy here at Lincoln. Tonight, we would like to provide you with an insight into the many ways our children are using technology as they acquire those necessary skills and tools to be successful, both later in college and in their careers. Our LLC Director, I'd like to introduce her, Ms. Debbie Lawson. I've created a movie for us that captures some of the ways students are using technology at Lincoln to learn, as well as demonstrate what they have learned. Please enjoy. Welcome to Lincoln School, where we use technology to deliver and differentiate instruction and to demonstrate our learning. We connect, collaborate, communicate, and create with Smartboards, Animoto, Photo Story 3, Padlet, Educreations, Prezi, and other wonderful tools. Second graders use technology every day as they learn about calendars, numbers, and money.
Today is Thursday, January 23rd, 2014.
Can you tell me what kind of pattern you see with our pyramid and our triangles?
Um, I see a growing pattern with the triangles because it goes pyramid, triangle, pyramid, triangle, triangle, pyramid, triangle, 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 and so on.
So every time, what's happening to your triangle? They grow up and...
One more.
One more. Good. Now we save it.
Four, two, three, four. One hundred plus one plus two.
Here is your tower, tie pin. Okay, you have a question. Yeah, I said, if you could tell me how many tens are in 142 altogether? I'm honored.
Fourteen.
Oh, good. What if someone said four? There's four tens. What are they forgetting about? Big Red, what would some people be forgetting if they said there's four tens?
Uh, they forget the ten second rule on the right.
Yes, sure. Good, moving on to next here.
Second grade students are also in the middle of their first wave research project, using the Pavelgo database to learn about the Presidents of the United States and typing speeches they will give in February as the individual Presidents. Students in third grade also use the Smartboard in their study of elapsed time.
Who wants to give me another problem? You give me the start time, you give me the last time.
No, you won't.
No, but I basically won't. So give me an example of problems. Okay. All right. Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Okay. What's uh... You don't need to... Go ahead. Start time 11:37, last time 3:05. Okay, done the office. We regular mind. Same button. Uh, first time. Three hours. Okay, ready to have me answer. Great, do you agree? Agree, disagree. Uh-oh, got a couple of wheels disagree. Why do you disagree? Isaac. And what happened this time? It changed, uh, went from 11:37 PM to now it's in the middle of nine, right? Yeah, there you go.
Currently, third graders are working on a research project which focuses on extreme weather. Students are finding information about their topics, then searching for photos on the Internet. Each team will create a photo story on their weather phenomenon, which will include their research, photos, narration, and music. They will share these photo stories with their guests on VIP Day to demonstrate their learning.
Misses, this is class here with a search for extreme storms.
How is this going to be about? Hi. I'm finding out what other storm is and how it starts.
Hi, I'm hearing about where did my dust storms occur. I also have to see if I can find information about a famous dust storm.
Hi, my job is to discover. Have discovered how to prepare for a less storm and how to be safe.
We are collaborating on this project. That means we are working together and we all contribute.
In fourth grade, some teachers and students have begun to use iPad apps, Educreations, and Becontext to create math tutorials for other students. This provides a wonderful opportunity for differentiated instruction.
I'm going to be using the expectation method. First, I want to see how many hundred and five can fit in nine hundred and seven tenths and two eighths. Now, five times a hundred is flattering. Maybe I'll get a little closer than that. Five times two hundred is thousand. That's too big, so five times a hundred is good. Now I can subtract one two hundred thirty-seven minus five hundred, which equals nine hundred seventy-seven.
As part of their social studies curriculum, fourth graders researched people, documents, or battles important to the Revolutionary War. Partnered with someone who studied a similar topic, the students interviewed each other for the newscast, It's Revolutionary, reporting on their subjects individually and comparing and contrasting them.
Hi, I'm Nathaniel. How can I tell you about Nathaniel Green?
Hi, I'm Nikki, and I'm going to tell you about Benedict Arnold.
The Faneuil-Grenville Battle, directed before Washington, was simply anymore, the last battle before Washington. His army's power was so strong that British armies had made him even push back.
Benedict Arnold was famous because he fought alongside William Allen and won many battles. All of his [inaudible 00:01:59] appreciated for contributions. By May of 1779, Arnold began bargaining with the British. He promised the British to capture West Point. For patriots, he was a traitor. He told secrets about military strategies to British soldiers.
Let's compare and contrast the people we researched. How were they alike?
They were alike because they both fought in the Revolutionary War. They died in the same month, and they were both very good fighters.
How are they different? They're different because Nathaniel Green was a patriot and Benedict Arnold was a lover. Another reason they were different because Nathaniel worked for George Washington and Benedict Arnold worked for [inaudible 00:01:58]. We got our information from the World War.
That's all for now. Thanks for watching this edition of It's Revolutionary.
Coinciding with their monthly genre book reports, fifth graders created persuasive book trailers in Animoto. They had to reflect on important elements and themes in their fantasy fiction novels. Their finished trailers were posted on a private YouTube channel so they could share them in class and with their families over winter break. Here are two examples to close out this presentation. As you can see, we use technology in myriad ways for learning at Lincoln. As you can see, we are integrating technology into all facets of learning. Technology is an ever-changing landscape. We at Lincoln pledge to keep learning new applications that will help our students continue to grow. This can be a daunting task, but to quote Abraham Lincoln, "The best thing about the future is that it comes one day at a time." Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Demarzone and the Lincoln staff for putting together examples of what happens every day in our classrooms. Also, I wanted to comment and congratulate Kathy Demarzone. This will be the last time you host the Board of Education meeting as Principal Lincoln. Mrs. Demarzone will be retiring in a year, and I know the fifteen years of your leadership in this building pays off every day, and we do appreciate that.
Very well said, Dr. Harris and Mrs. Demarzone. I won't miss you because you're my neighbor, but I will appreciate as President of Lincoln School, so I hope to hang around with you in the neighborhood a little bit, and I hope you enjoy your free time, but you will be my dear linkey. Thank you for all your reduced service. At this time, staff is very welcome to stay, which are also very welcome, to tend to your needs at home. I know you probably have lots of papers to grade and, you know, other things to do with your life, so you may, you might feel bad if you get up and... And we... I was trying to say "me," but that's right. So thank you very much, and thank you for offering for our seats every day. All right, modifications to the agenda. I believe you have one?
We do have one modification. We do have our Action Item Seating Number One, which was the request from a local developer. We've received a phone call and a letter today from that developer that is withdrawn this request, so there will be no need to take action on this item on our end of the evening. So, if there must be any further questions, I would recommend we move this to the agenda.
Is there any objection to looking aside? Okay, very good. The recognition and achievement, Dr. Harris.
Thank you, Mrs. Inteher. We are very excited and proud this evening to have a representative here for College Board. This is the fourth year in a row our district has received special recognition to be on the AP College Honor Roll. And both of our high school leadership is here this evening, both from Week North and Week North and South. And this award is not by chance. I'm going to introduce the representative from the College Board who's here this evening, Mr. Orin Banpary, and I'm going to let him talk about what the award actually is and means, and then I'll certainly comment at the end about why this continues to be a very special recognition for District Toronto. Mr. Banpary.
Good evening, this is great view. That was amazing. The reason why I'm standing here today to talk about four years of exceptional practice in education at the highest levels of rigor, Advanced Placement, is by far because of that video. That was truly amazing. I am inspired and if you're not going to retire, I want to follow you. But more importantly, I love, as organization, as College Board, I have the great fortune of traveling the country and visiting schools everywhere, from rural to urban, really trying to think about what, how should we advance rigor in the classroom, what that looks like. But that foundational element clearly starts here, and it's clearly recognition of this. We are here to talk about the award and all the different people involved, but it is clearly a remarkable achievement, or that we just saw here, and something that will really [inaudible 00:02:55]. Congratulations, excellent work. And then I thought all these people were here to see me again. Once again, my name is Horeban Pori. I am Senior District Director of College Board in our K-12 department, and we have an office here in Chicago. It's one of six regional offices. And as, we're just discussing a little bit about this remarkable achievement. There's over 6,000 public school systems across this, across the country, and yet only 477 districts are being recognized as a board. Advanced Placement is more than just class. Advanced Placement requires more than just implementation of programs and college-level materials. The greatest thing that I see about Advanced Placement is the character that it builds in students. Automatically, from the very beginning, fundamentals can be ready, hard work, extra hours and time are ingrained within each other. The ability for a tenth grader, even a ninth grader, to take a college-level class, who's even qualifying to score a three, four, or five on the exam, is absolutely remarkable. We are done completely by that. How a fifteen-year-old can sit in an AP or history class at a ninth grade and score amazing grades, yet testament to the development of so many people. So when we're recognizing communities who has returned for the fourth year in a row, and this award has only been available for eight years, it's a remarkable achievement. Because it's not just quality of the students, which is quite evident, but it's really about the faculty, who put in so much time, effort, and energy that we don't see. Programs that are developed, students getting together on Saturdays at coffee shops, we hear this all the time, and I know it happens here, too. But in order to receive the award, there's really a pretty strict set of criteria that only 477 districts are receiving this award. Because you have to increase your access to AP every year, at the same time increasing excellence. And our mission at College Board is access equity and excellence. And what's really, really hard to do is access and excellence at the same time. And one, and millions of [inaudible 00:02:58] will either restrict our access or grow the excellence, or vice versa. And being able to do both is a remarkable achievement. All the students are graduating within an opportunity to pursue higher education, the highest degree. They're entering without, our data shows us, without remedial needs of the post-secondary education, with stifles in our graduation rates at post-secondary. They're leaving with those qualifying scores of three, four, or five, which are recognized by close to 70% of all colleges and universities across this country, saving families hundreds and thousands of dollars. And so to be recognized with this remarkable achievement is not just overnight. There's hard work that develops as an infrastructure that you create, an Advanced Placement program, as opposed to a series of courses. So with that, I'd like to recognize two principals who are here, where these, I wish they could reside in your school, but I think they do. And we board is Matthew Biscuit. And we board of South David Clay. And we know that, as principals, it is very, very difficult to sustain and grow an AP program. The pressures that you have of trying to expand access to more students, to giving the best opportunities to fulfill our dreams of post-secondary education, but more probably qualified to improve our standard of post-secondary graduation rates, but at the same time meeting the needs of the teachers, the resources that they need, as well as measuring the excellence of scores of three and five. So the combination of all those factors is what sets this school system apart from literally everybody else. And four consecutive years is by far a remarkable achievement. So congratulations to you. We've just finished the AP report to the nation. It just was released yesterday with over three million, over three and a half million exams taken by two million students, and yet, growing access equity and excellence is still a very difficult thing to do. So even though we've expanded, we have more diverse students than we've ever had, and as communities are continuing to change, the commitment to excellence is paramount. And so we commend you on that effort on behalf of the entire College Board. They've 102 years of existence. We're very proud, and I would love to come back and learn a lot more of what's happening here, so we can maybe model and replicate across the country. So thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with all of you. Congratulations on an amazing achievement for your family, your students, and the faculty. Thank you.
It's very wonderful that the College Board spends the time to come out to the schools to receive this recognition, because it is your need. It does hit their mission and their target. You look to our mission and our targets, prepare kids to be college and career-ready. AP and College Board will tell you that one of the most successful indicators of kids down the road, after they leave us, after they graduate from our high schools, if they get access and/or are successful in an AP course, that is a huge indicator about where they're headed and how they do in the future. So this was not by chance. We've got a lot of programming that goes on at ledger level, middle school level, and high school level every day, to be able to receive this type of national recognition. So thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Harris, and thank you so much for your kind words. Now we come to public comments on agenda items. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on agenda items at this time. We appreciate hearing from you and value your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district, and public input and variety of ideas is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting, so please be respectful for the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please use the microphone, state your name and address, and address your comments to the board. Limit your comments to three minutes and leave actual and courteous and gynecous statements that might be personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. If you feel your member, your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board chats to chat or present your comments to us in writing. First, Pam Nielsen.
I'm going to score my kid's basketball game right now. Hi, I know you're all tired of seeing me, but I love seeing you guys, so, sorry. Got to talk about B-teams. What I want to do tonight is reiterate, I know you've heard it before, a lot of this, a couple new things, but I want everybody to hear this every time. These are all the reasons for you to say yes. And here's the key points I hope you discuss tonight. Reinstating a pro... Sorry. Pam Nielsen, 27W68537, [inaudible 00:02:57]. Anything else? We're reinstating a program that already has been a great success. This was only cut for monetary reasons. Nothing was wrong with this program, and it was always supposed to be a temporary cut. The board assured us it would come back. Nothing to reevaluate, has already worked perfectly alongside the other programs in middle school. It was so beneficial, no one wanted it gone. It was one of the last items cut. Parents have been asking consistently to get it back since it's been gone. We've seen a negative impact since it's been gone by coaches and students. I think we all agree it's beneficial to the students. You have all kind of agreed to that. It's not about winning, but it's more about character and life lessons. Character that will take them through high school, college, and life. Having B-teams improves performance in school. It helps prevent issues with obesity, drug use, attendance problems. It helps improve rate, graduation rate, student involvement. There is data, I got data from the... Data from the 1997 National Youth Risk Behavior Survey indicates that adolescents who play a sport are less likely to drink, smoke, use drugs, have sex, or have suicidal thoughts. Athletes have found that have both greater academic aspirations while in high school and ultimately attain more education than non-athletes. And also, the National Center for Educational Statistics reports that student athletes have a 20% higher chance of completing a college degree, and are more likely to be employed and in better health than non-athletes. Middle school is getting more and more like high school. We need to keep kids engaged earlier. Let's talk about the survey. Survey that you asked for that showed an above-normal response rate of 24%. Ninety-one percent of the parents said yes, they want the B-teams back. That showed that parents, the survey also said parents were okay with an increase in fees. And did you know that more people are for this, bringing the B-teams back, and showed up for the first community engagement meeting? In fact, double, and it's growing every day. People from the A-team to across country, track wrestling, are just now joining, and they're finding out there's no confidence for them. This has never been a this or that scenario. We're not bringing it back in isolation. It's always been about the all-around student. Feel like the funds are there? On our $150 million budget, it is equivalent to asking you for a dime in total to pay for us. And this was verified by the PMA consultant in the last finance meeting I courted around the hallway. Parents have offered the health care costs. Most of the expensive issues are non-negotiable. Unfortunately, our hands are tied because of the issues with teachers and buses. We talked about fundraising opportunities. For example, we can have one-day shootout tournaments, each one of the four middle schools, and hopes one per year for uniforms or antlers. So we, there's a, a lot of parents feel there's every reason for you to say yes, and we hope you discuss it tonight, and we can vote on this thing. Thank you so much for your time.
Susan Booth.
Hi, I'm Susan Booth. I live on [inaudible 00:02:57]. Some of you may remember, I spoke at the September meeting and said that I could step up to the microphone more often, so for better or worse, here I am. I watched the January 22 meeting online and saw... I watched the January twenty-second meeting online and saw that there were only two speakers from the community, and both spoke about issuing of ten million dollar bonds, and reflected the view that the district was not living within its means. I'm here to let you know that there is another side to that quote. I have lived in this district for almost ten years now, and currently have a second grader and a junior. The main reason my husband and I booked to meet was because of the schools. For me, issuing the ten million dollar bonds is not a, is a well-planned investment. The city's school system is one of its cornerstones, if we don't keep it healthy, the city will suffer. Whether you have children in the public school system or not, it is in everybody's best interest to keep the schools in good condition, in good condition, as the schools are what draw young families to a community and keep the city thriving. One of the speakers from the last meeting discussed how the average teacher salary is higher than it should be based on an inflation adjustment from nineteen ninety-two. I didn't check this person's math, but for the sake of argument, let's say it's correct. My kids have been to Jefferson, Madison, and now Wheatmore, and they have had seven teachers between them. Six of them have been with the district for seven years, and I'm guessing are in that higher pay bracket. I want to tell you that they are worth every single penny, as is the one who's been with the district a short time. And I do not want to see you make any reductions in teacher salaries. Teachers spend almost seven hours a day with their kids, they are teaching them building blocks that will propel them into the world. I don't know how you put a proper price on that, it certainly shouldn't be based on inflation. I'm proud to be in the district that attracts the best teaching talent and pays them well. After I spoke in the September meeting about the need to keep pushing for a new building for Jefferson, I sat down and a gentleman in front of me turned around and said, there were some bad decisions made in nineteen ninety, implying that it couldn't be done because of that. It took me a second to process that that was over twenty years ago. I was a senior in high school in nineteen ninety-one, nineteen ninety-two. Should we learn from past mistakes? Yes. Should we stay in the past and stand still? Absolutely not. Forward, onward, upward, choose your word. It's time to make good, sound decisions based on what is going on right now. And I believe that is what you are doing, and I urge you to go up to issue the bonds. Thank you.
Lisa Sudarski, did I say that right?
Yes.
Lisa Sudarski, eleven oh six West Gaven Drive in Indianapolis. I don't like everyone looking at my back. I'm here to tell a personal story and hopefully tug at your heartstrings, but also to thank the district for what they've done for my son. Two and a half years ago, my son Lucas entered Edison Middle School as a special ed student. He had an A P extremely extensive with three major diagnoses, pervasive developmental disorder, which is autism spectrum, A D H D, severe hyperactive, and verbal aphaxia, which is a speech and language disorder. On paper, my son would be considered an at-risk student. At-risk because profile of kids like this make them very prone to being extremely disruptive in the school, impulsive, oftentimes aggressive, and definitely socially disconnected from their peers. Also extremely prone to bullying. Very lucky for Lucas, there were three no-cut sports available for him to join, and immediately he joined the cross-country team, because we knew he probably could run. We had no idea that the kid could run like Forrest Gump. He took off running and really never stopped. Running gave him the confidence, and being part of the team gave him confidence to join the next team, which was the wrestling team, another no-cut sport. It did the same thing for his self-esteem and his sense of self just continued to increase as he ran and wrestled for the next two and a half years. I want to show you a picture of my not-so awkward son today. I don't know if you can see that.
Wow.
He's the fastest nine-and-a-half mileer in the entire conference. He also just won the Husky Invitational for a hundred and forty-seven pound weight pass for wrestling. He would be considered an elite athlete at this point. I'm not here to say that these sports are going to cure autism, but I'm here to tell you that my son no longer meets criteria for P D D. In a letter from his doctor from last week, he told me that sports, yes, sports, have not only improved his symptoms of A D H D, but have had a profound positive influence on Lucas's social and emotional development. We leave Edison and head into Wheatmoreville South, no longer at risk for anything but maybe a college scholarship. Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes the public comment. This is the conference report, Dr. Harris.
This is Ed Tahr, and good evening, board members. Couple items here this evening, informational things, but also some very critical items as well. First of all, the weather. We continue to fight the northern Illinois climate, as we have not had for many years in the past here. It goes back to the late seventies when we've seen anything like this, and I can tell you we've weathered it pretty well. We've only had a couple minor issues at our facilities, we've been fortunate. Over this past weekend, Edison had a water rain break, we were able to hold school, thank goodness, I was there twice on Sunday to make sure of that. And thanks to our local plumber, Mr. Future was out there all day Sunday making sure that we were able to get school open, and I certainly do appreciate that, that community piece there that he's dedicated to help us get things going. We did get it fixed Monday afternoon, and so hopefully we don't have a pond out back there, I'm not sure where all that water was going. I'm gonna tell you, it was a lot of water, it was pumping out of the ground, heading south in the back lot there at Edison. But other than that, we have, it's done pretty well. As of now, as it stands today, we will be ending school on June tenth. We will be bringing everybody's calendar to the board either in March or April, we may wait till April just to make sure, the way this winter's going, to make that last day of school official. We do have one more day, and there's been a lot of questions and comments about what happens if we get past those five emergency days. What basically happens is we have to apply for a waiver to the State Board of Education to be excused from making up those days past. We have not reached that limit yet. If we do have to cancel school for any reason more than two, or one more day, then we will have to apply for that waiver if we do choose to not make up those days. So that impacts our state aid and our state attorney, so we do need to watch that carefully. Hopefully Mother Niche will cooperate here over the next few weeks. Another item I'd like to bring to your attention on the personnel report this evening, we have four new assistant principals that are being recommendation, recommending for hiring. And I would, they're all, all here this evening. Our staff at each of our schools that are recommending this evening have been working hard over the last month or two, making sure we have good candidates bringing forth for the board to approve. And I would like to introduce them. The first person is Aaron Axelson, Axelson, who is going to be the new assistant principal at Wheatmoreville South. Aaron, stand up, welcome. Executive Administration of District two hundred, Aaron has been an English teacher at Wheatmoreville South for several years, and we welcome you into the leadership role. Also Alexia Elliott, Alexia also English and partnership at Wheat North, will be a new assistant principal at Wheat North. Julie Pavini, Julie is from Swego High School, will be coming to us also as an assistant principal at Wheat North High School. Welcome to the board. And finally, we are recommending Adam Ferguson to move roles in the district, Adam will be our new assistant principal at Hubble Middle School. Thank you. Adam has been one of our directors of special ed for the last several years in our district, and will be working now in Hubble. So three of these four recommendations are internal candidates, we are very happy now to have them, as well as the person from the other district, but that has been something we've paid attention to over the last several years, and very happy to see these recommendations reported, and welcome to our leadership team. Heading the board's approval, the personnel report tonight. Couple other items from the big picture, from the state and federal level, last Thursday and Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Luda Conference down in Springfield. As I've said before, it's always interesting to spend a couple days in Springfield to get a pulse on what's happening at the, at state government level specifically related to education. Couple items I want to draw to your attention, one was some information that I did put in your grade folders this evening, in regard to the PARC assessment. I know the board is very aware of the state changing the assessment for next year, the fourteen, fifteen school year, which will be implemented in grades three through eleven. I had the opportunity a couple weeks ago, on January thirty-first, to meet with several high school superintendents throughout the Chicago area, and we met with one specific topic in mind to discuss the significant concerns that we have about the implementation of the PARC assessment at the high school level in particular. And I'm not going to go into huge detail, I encourage you to read the letter. I was directly involved in drafting this letter that we sent to Chris Cook, the superintendent. I will be heading down to Springfield on the twentieth of February to meet with Chris Cook, along with four other superintendents, from New Trier, La Grange Township, Lake Park, and West Chicago High School District. So the five of us will be going to Springfield to meet with Chris in response to this letter. We do have very significant concerns about the implementation of the assessment at the high school and the impact it would have specifically on juniors. And basically, if you see in the letter there one of the attachments, they would start testing at the end of March, and pretty much be in the testing cycle all the way through the end of the school year, with the combination of state and A P testing and finals and a range of things. It's just unacceptable. And hopefully the state superintendent will work with us to find some solutions to how we might do some things differently at the high school level. So I will keep the board informed about where this is headed, and look forward to that continued conversation, we hope to make some progress on that. I did talk with our high school principals about that a couple weeks ago, and they also are in full support of taking a hunter look at what's going to happen at our high schools regarding this new assessment scheme. Another item I want to bring to your attention, we had discussion at last week, was the Five Essential Survey, as you remember, last year the state of Illinois required all districts over a two-year period to provide the state survey, and would hopefully guide districts to help them continue in their school improvement efforts. Many districts implemented that survey fully last year, including us. All of our schools met the criteria, participated, I had this conversation recently with all of our principals, had a principals' meeting, and we have decided not to reissue that survey again this year. There are many data concerns about that particular survey, there's a lot of unanswered questions about where it's headed, and we just felt like we, we've met our requirements under the current legislation, and we are not going to reissue that survey again until the other Chicago and the state school board, or the state school board make the corrections and the adjustments to that survey. So therefore, the data that we've already received and collected will be that standard data for this year and next year. Many other districts like us are following the same pattern as well. Couple other items, just to bring to your attention, the conversation that we had is the Education Funding Advisory Committee, E F A, another acronym that has been going on at the state level, talking about funding in the state of Illinois to public education. There are some recommendations coming out of that committee, the General Assembly will be hearing from that committee in the spring session here. We do not anticipate any immediate action happening this spring, certainly keep our eyes on that. There will be winners and losers, if any of these recommendations are followed up on, we will, will impact us on how they do state aid, and how we get accounted for in our allocations. There certainly does, nobody disagrees there needs to be changes in that formula, it is flawed, it is antiquated, it is not appropriate, there's so many loopholes through it in a variety of ways, it does need to be redone, we will be watching that carefully as that conversation continues. Also heard presentation from American Finelli, who's a healthcare manager, spoke to us about the A C A, American, the Healthcare Act at a federal level. And we continue as staff in our district making sure that we're prepared for those changes. The federal government just a couple days ago announced that they are pushing back the implementation again another couple of years, but still we are preparing for that, and what it means, especially for some of our part-time employees, our substitutes, our part-time staff that work a lot of side jobs for some of our coaches and activity directors that are not district employees, that do small pieces of employment for us, we have to pay very special attention to those employees, those employee groups, to make sure we meet the federal regulations with the flaws. We will be watching that carefully and making recommendations in our healthcare planning over the next couple of years. And finally, the last item at the Luda conversation was an update on the Charter School Committee. If you remember, Heather Quinn asked that, the legislature asked that there was a committee put together to review the whole Charter School Law and the Charter School Commission. We did get an update on that, there is some funding recommendations, we educated on that a year ago right now, on what that looks like when there's a charter school situation in our district, where they can request funding anywhere from seventy-five percent to a hundred and twenty-five percent of the per pupil allocation. While there is a lot of conversation about the validity of that particular funding scenario, as we have made conversations at this table about, I do believe there will be some recommended changes coming out of that. I also believe there is a chance that the Charter School Commission might not exist in the future, they may take it, the only state board of education may take that back on their plate, is my understanding. So that has not been fully decided, however, I do believe that conversation is going to take place this spring, and we will be watching that carefully as it impacts us. Unless there's any questions, I do want to talk for one more item about the Engage Two Hundred, but is there any questions about any of those items up to this point? I wanted to make sure if there's anything I need to clarify or any comments or questions.
Just one, there was an article in the paper some time ago, and I think I talked about this, about the testing not including, the test not including A C T. Could you kind of tell us what it is?
I will comment on that. Actually, as part of the attachment here to this letter that all of the superintendents sent to the state superintendent, we are concerned that our high school leadership feels exactly the same way about eliminating A C T as required assessment at the state level, which will be part of this transition if we do implement the PARC assessments in placing that. Now, many districts, including ours, we know there's no way we can just eliminate the A C T opportunities for our kids. So, you know, A C T has sixty years of history of being recognized by colleges as the premier evaluator of a standardized test, of the score that they look at. We know we're gonna have to continue to provide that for our students some way, somehow. And all these other superintendents signed that letter in agree as well. And I believe there's probably a community mistake when this is all said and done, that won't follow suit. So therefore, if the PARC assessment takes the place, we will have to figure out a different way to implement the A C T. So that is one of the big challenges now. One of the solutions that has recently come out is A C T has their own assessment sequence, and that's what the A C T aspire is there, they now have a grade three through twelve assessment, you know, in place, and so they have a solution for, for people to consider. When the state of Illinois decided to get down the PARC direction, A C T aspired to then exist, now A C T has developed their own assessment, we are gonna ask the state superintendent to reconsider that assessment as an alternative, at least at the high school level, maybe even at the K eight, or K twelve. So that, you will see that in the letter there as kind of a cross-reference between the two, and what our recommendation is for consideration, and we hope to have that conversation with Superintendent Cook here in the next couple of weeks. So, correct, we are concerned about that, and we know the A C T is a good benchmark for our ongoing success of our students. Any other questions about that? Okay, last item this evening for a complete superintendent's report, I would like to introduce Liz Corey, who is here this evening to give the board an update on the Engage Two Hundred. Liz, as you remember, is one of our co-chairs, along with Scott Brown, and she's gonna update the board on where we stand as of today.
Good evening, board members and members of the tenants. It's great to be back with my children, who were here from nineteen ninety-two through two thousand and five, and I want to congratulate Mrs. Marsup on her retirement. She says, "You go." She was an excellent, is an excellent student. She contributed much to the tone and feeling of all the education that I'm experiencing. So thank you. Good evening again, back to the topic we're talking about, Engage Two Hundred. I was only going to attend to a first meeting in the gender, because I have previous commitment, but community engagement meeting number one with the state and the district exceeded our expectations wildly in terms of the attendance that occurred. There were over four hundred people, somewhere, we lost count because we didn't have enough materials, and we had some other logistics issues that we worked through with the facility team this past week. In the work rooms, the attendees were asked to provide the In the work rooms, the attendees were asked to provide the greatest surprise and concern that they learned from the state of the district. And overwhelmingly, the response was the changing demographics, primarily the number of free and reduced lunch, and English language learners came in second, as well as student performance and the level of student performance was also a surprise, followed by technology and the money spent on help placement students. Most concerning to the participants was student performance and how it improved, followed by, in this order, technology, changing demographics, facilities, and finances, professional development, and class size. The groups were asked to list the top priorities to be studied and to be worked on in the upcoming community engagement sessions. And the highest priority, number one, most surprised, student performance. I mean, it's really your product that you put out, student performance. Number two was programs and services, technology, facilities, and finance. For the verbatim specifics of the results of the first meeting, please visit the district website and just click on the Engage Two Hundred logo, and you can read the verbatim results of the meeting that occurred. At the facility team meeting, which we had on Monday, the team worked through what could be done to enhance the experience for future CDSs. And for sure, parking was an issue, and so we're going to do some things with parking and tweak that a little bit, make sure that we have a better turnout to hear more from the community. So the communications department has been active and has done some, let's see, some mailers, which went out to everybody in the district, as well as little cards for the facility team to hand out to encourage people to attend in all our schools and everyone's. Oh, yeah. Let's see, there was a chat with the mayor that occurred, board mom who was speaking at local groups. Second session, student achievement rose to the top of the list, and the facility team could be the outline suggestions to the assistant superintendent and the mutual services thing, all this, who will be addressing us in CDS too. We talked about tentative topics in the order, what's the title, that we're still kind of massaging, but we can't be able to just what we're looking at. So possible topics for number three would be program and services, which includes ELL, emotional social learning and extracurricular. Number four would be, we're calling it Twenty First Century Learning Environment, or something like that, we're working through it, which includes technology and facility issues. And then finally, community engagement session number five will be finance. Really haven't come up with a really engaging way to address finance, and make it sound a little bit more exciting. Finally, community engagement for number six will be the presentation of the draft summer report. So lastly, I wanted to recognize the facilitating team. It's a group of about twenty-five to thirty people that really has done a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and they're the people that are there handing out, passing things, and really have worked really hard to make what happens in the community engagement sessions meaningful. And so I wanted to thank them for helping us to keep everything running smoothly. And I'd like to encourage everyone, lastly, to take a look at the Engage Two Hundred section on the District Two Hundred website. You can like us on Facebook, I know you probably heard this before, and you can follow us on Twitter. And lastly, yes, we will be tweeting live. The principal of Lowell, Kathy Melk, is going to be our official tweeter for the event. So please join us, come out, next Wednesday night, February nineteenth, seven o'clock, at Lowell Elementary School. Look forward to seeing everybody there. Thank you.
Liz did a fabulous job. I conclude the superintendent's report. Most of your questions.
All right, now we move to the consent agenda. We have ten items on the consent agenda tonight. Acceptance of a gift to Lowell Elementary School. Acceptance of gifts to Madison Elementary School. Acceptance of gifts from the Madison PTA. Approval of geometry and algebra two standards. Approval of compressor installation project bid for Weyman Hill South High School. Approval of ENEVAC, Emergency Load Response Program Agreement. Approval of the resolution to transfer funds from working cash fund to the Elmer Municipal Retirement Home. Approval of bills payable in payroll. Approval of minutes, January eighth, twenty thousand, two oh fourteen, open and closed, January second, January twenty-second, twenty fourteen, open. And approval to destroy recordings of pro sessions prior to September two thousand and twelve. Approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of the absence of administrative certified, classified, and non-leaving staff. Are there any items that the board members wish to be here, moved from the consent agenda? Okay, then is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Moved to accept the consent agenda.
Moved by Mr. Roman?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson? Is there any discussion? Mr. Paulson?
I just had one question on item number six, this ENEVAC agreement. I did, I read the agreement, I'm really encouraged by it. Go over it to the website, Paulson, others, over there. Could you just, for the benefit of everybody else, give a short overview of what this is and how we can, for Mr. Bird.
Sure. This program, actually, I found out, I was a business manager, reading, and as exciting as that sounds, a few of them are mentioning that they enjoyed this program, or reading about this program. What it really is, is during the peak times of the energy season in the summer, there's times where obviously the energy providers are overloaded because of the energy use that's going on potentially regionally. And so this is basically, it's a program where they ask us to turn off the power or turn down the power in our buildings. And the high schools are obviously our two biggest users, so we met with both facility managers at each high school. I should mention, I turned this over when I heard about it, to Colin, he's done a great job putting it together and getting it coordinated, but the high schools are our biggest users. And generally, this load reduction occurs in the afternoon. Obviously, what I think is to be the warmest time is from June first through the end of September. As you know, our high schools are out of two fifteen, so Colin and Tom, Colin and Mike Matt, obviously, are turning things down anyway, but this would be, we can call to shut them off, but there is a great potential for earning money for this process. So it's a no cost to this, so that's kind of the vanilla version of it. Colin can probably go into great detail of that, I think, is the answer for looking for.
So essentially, when we shut down, reduce our load based on that's money, that's exactly what proportion of the percentage is savings.
That's what we receive, sixty-one percent of the savings.
If we, if we don't, if it doesn't happen, then we don't get, you know, return. It's all the only benefit from it if you need to retire. So it's some kind of a no-brainer, and certainly, we're going to participate and hopefully reap the benefits.
Is there any other discussion?
Well, we can't let the gifts to Lowell Madison Madison survive without recognizing for this period of excellence and great gender development. I don't know what we'd do without gifts from PTA and others to our schools, just to enhance the educational experience for our children, which is what we're all about. And I want to thank those who made those gifts, loved those to Lowell Madison Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Any other comments? And Mrs. Center, will you please call for Cook?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Giamiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteheart?
Yes, motion passed. We want extra item tonight, and that's approval of the modifications to the board operating principles. May I? Oh, I'm sorry. We want extra item, that's approval of the modifications to the board operating principles. May I give a motion, please?
So?
Moved by Mr. Roman? Seconded by Mrs. Cackill. Discussion?
I don't have any discussion points. I'd like to, they turned out at their last meeting, I think, we received some comments like you mentioned, to support the changes, so I think they're great. Just one question, this is, are they responsible, Joe, or Council?
Teddy was reviewing them, so I'm pretty sure he's with them. Mrs. Tony was in agreement with them, so.
I did talk to Mr. Paulson yesterday, he was in for another reason, he told me to guess that one.
Oh, okay.
Yes, he reviewed them, very consistent with this, I understand.
Okay, Mrs. Center, will you please call for the votes?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cackill?
Yes.
Mr. Giamiani?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteheart?
We're in a little trouble with our guy trying to score here. Do you have the?
We need to move.
You look back.
Okay. You know why, you all need to press through a refresh button because of the change to the agenda to remove the item coming actually. I'm sorry, my mistake, you need to refresh. Your address R was my first word.
You have a voting square?
It's there. It's now there. I'm sorry, I forgot to say something. I understand. Every person, every one.
Just go ahead and enjoy your meeting, you shouldn't block it.
Try enjoying meeting. You're having that odd job, you're having this bad meeting. It's a good meeting.
You didn't vote in the last one.
Okay. Proof these, but more importantly, you have to refresh the agenda.
Sorry for all the technical glitches, we're bad online. All right, we have two discussion items tonight. The first is our fund balance, bond issuance. Dr. Harris, would you like to kind of kick it off?
I will. I will just briefly refresh the board's memory from our last meeting. The board did vote to put the bonds out for the community consideration. Issue the bonds, one of the discussion items was around how much, you know, should we go out and actually issue the full ten million? The other item was whether or not we should relook at using some fund balance to help pay for some of those facility issues that we had discussion about. So what happened was, since the last meeting, we have had a finance committee meeting, which Mr. Matheson was there, Mr. Roman attended Mrs. Swanson's place, because she was in warm sunny Florida, so was not able to attend, but certainly shared her thoughts on where we were at. I'm gonna, we did discuss three items, set up on three things. I'm going to turn over to the committee members to comment on it. I certainly can summarize those, you know, the issues at war. So, Mr. Matheson or Mr. Roman?
Yeah, three items we discussed was change to award policy two point two two, respect to gaining twenty-five percent fund balance, consistent with the directions of the guidance from the management meeting. We modified that in attempt to the board at the next board meeting, posted the public comment in March. What we did was, in essence, provide that the board, in this discretion, it does the union access of twenty-five percent of our funds to capital, the operations of these.
We have the capital projects.
Capital projects. In essence, it's simply the draft is circulated in the last board meeting. Secondly, we discussed the proposal that Mr. Matheson originally raised, that we should go on record with respect to the resolution that provides that we make our best efforts, equal amount of guidance, we receive from TMA to level off the payment of the bonds into the future, so we don't have a type of payment that took us five years out, a presentation was made in our last board meeting. And that resolution will be counted to the board at the next meeting as well, as committed by us, to make our best efforts to be there. And finally, we discussed this ongoing issue that we fixed with respect to how we finance capital, to finance the capital leaders, whether we take it from operations funds, we need to run and issue bonds. And I think we need to make a clear to the community that because of our financial position, if we are going to have capital improvement, repair or upgrade our facilities, those funds will necessarily have to come from the monstroses, operation finances don't allow us to set aside money from operation finances for a maintenance plan. We have been doing that, in coming to that conclusion, it was pretty evident, I looked at the TMA projections that were presented to us at the last board meeting, we're going to face a deficit in our budget for the next year. Unless it's Superintendent Harris and staff is trying to say it, is to put this into a balanced budget, and that'll do it. But it's a constant battle. It's going to be a constant battle for us for the next five years at least. And it's been a constant battle for us, since I've been on the board and I know this before, I've been on the board. So with that, I thought, well, have we been smart and wise, cruel, and good in our expenditures from operating funds? I've mentioned this before, and I didn't have it, the document form, but I brought it with me tonight. It's according to Civic Federation, that was, if you would estimate effective property tax rates for Chicago and the power counties and suburbs from two thousand and one to two thousand and ten. And the effective tax rate is a tax rate, effective tax rate compared to the full market, the full value of your, full assessed value of your property, and the percentage. For example, if your property has a market value of three hundred thousand dollars and you pay two percent taxes, property taxes, the effective tax rate is two percent, or for six thousand dollars. And Civic Federation concluded, you know, focus leading experience, smallest tenure increase in effective tax rate, rising by twenty point two percent from one point nine three percent in two thousand and one to two point three two percent in two thousand and ten. We had the smallest tenure rate of any power community in the Chicago area at all that time. And of course, the property tax rate, the biggest is strongly goes to the schools. It's our budget, it's our revenue. And the report went on, compared to some of the other communities in the area. For example, Neigerville has a two point, we currently, in two thousand and ten, we got a two point three two percent effective tax rate. Neigerville, in DuPage County, we have two point one eight percent, but they had assessed values that were pretty much in excess of what we have here. However, the Neigerville community, in Mill County, had a two point five percent effective tax rate. Yet I look at the other communities listed here, they range from one point one to one percent overall, with very high assessed values for their properties there, but all the others are, the other two point eight or nine percent were in excess of three percent. So we do have effective low tax rate compared to public communities. That doesn't mean our property taxes are low, but in comparison, we are doing performing well. And that was confirmed three weeks ago by David Harold, who came out with property tax rates per student. And they evaluated the property tax rates per student in ninety-two communities, and we were sixty-second from the top. The effective tax, property tax per student rate, ten thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. The median was almost a thousand dollars and above that. And the average was almost, and that is what we're, almost two thousand. So we are making improvements in our use of our operational funds here. Nevertheless, we face this budget. Nevertheless, we face this budget issue every year, balancing our budget and the struggles that superintendent staff go through in achieving a balanced budget. Uh, so again, that just highlights to me that the opportunity to segregate funds out of our, our operational funds into a maintenance fund is just not there. It's just not there. In that, I try to compare ourselves to some of our benchmark districts. And, uh, our total tax rate for $100 here for District 203, uh, the tax of 2010 is 1.04%. Whereas the average assessed valuation for our properties around $258,000. Neigerville, on the other hand, have an effective tax rate of 4.23%, higher than that, and assessed valuation of $295,000. And so, uh, they may be able to have some of their operational funds put into a capital fund, uh, but we can't, not without issuing bonds. Uh, and I have the other benchmark district on this report as well. It's pretty much the same story. Neither, they have a higher effective tax rate, uh, and a higher assessed value, or they certainly have one or the other above us. And importantly, uh, District 203 and some of the other districts have a lot of commercial property, which we here, we don't necessarily have. And that is a challenge that we have to fix, which again, yes, if we're gonna finance our debt, then we need to issue bonds. So, uh, the issuance of $10 million of bonds, uh, to, we have to improve next, uh, next board meeting is not good, it's frivolous, it's wise, and also the speaker very public comments mentioned is doing, uh, it's a well paying investment. And, uh, so I'm encouraged by that. And the fact that we need to do a better job of educating our constituents and why we need to issue bonds and when it's necessary to do so.
Mr. Matheson, do you remember the finance committee?
Yeah, basically, I just to kind of, uh, talk about a few of the, Mr. Menter. The, uh, number one, the change in the board policy that we're talking about is merely to make it consistent with the, uh, annual financial report accumulations that occur in the reporting that we do to the state. And it basically excludes, uh, the revenue from the IMF fund, uh, is not part of the state's calculation. So we're gonna, you know, the recommendation will be to change our policy to be consistent with that of the state's calculation. Just to, again, you know, anytime we have, you know, a calculation here and one there, you know, that we have to explain it. So why, why not just be consistent? Uh, that's only one. Uh, and two, uh, the, uh, we, we talked a little bit about, uh, the long-term plan of, uh, we wanted memorialize, I guess is the best way to say it, the, our, our concern and attention toward the refinancing of the bond issues, one appropriate. Uh, basically, there's two components to the, I'll call it two components of the tax rating. Uh, one is what I call operating money, the other is capital money or debt money. And the debt money is the one, or let's go back to the operating. The operating money can only go up with CPI. And in that, this case, I think it's 1.25 or 1.75 or something like that, depending what year we're talking about, but very limited. The, the debt fund or the bond interest payments, whatever you wanna call it, there is technically no limit because that's determined, uh, when bond referendums are issued. Uh, there are opportunities in that, as we are now confronted with, to fund these working cash bonds or whatever, uh, to pay for costs that are hoped not operative. Uh, there, you know, there are the property improvements and so on. As the committee on, uh, facilities mentioned in like the other day, I think we were looking at somewhere in the area of $80 million of improvements or, you know, problems that we, you know, physical problems that we have over a cycle of time. And, uh, basically, I think, you know, a lot of the comments I've heard from the community after, you know, as we talked about the bonds is, you know, we already built the building, why do we now have to finance it? And, and I think again, the, if the roof's gonna go bad, okay? And we're at that stage of our facilities. So we have to basically bond, it was basically working cash bonds to create the dollars to pay for those. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but the state legislator, legislature, in its limitation of operating monies, the 1.7 or 1.5 rate, does not do that on the other part, on the debt service. So I think the realities we have to face as a community or taxpayer or whatever you want to say, is that we will always have debt in the district. And if it isn't building a new building, it's when the buildings get old and start deteriorating, we have to fix them. So that debt, you know, that program is allowed for by the state legislature. It's not, you know, uh, just because we've done this over a, a cycle of time, it's really, really a reflection of the aging buildings we have. And it's not some mismanagement of monies. If we all, if we have all the buildings, you know, we don't have that problem. But, uh, you know, so I think we have to, you know, realize that that's a tip. Now, I, I'd love to say that we could finance these within the operating budget, but, you know, I think we're, we're either beyond that, uh, you know, in our timeframe of life here or whatever, but our buildings are, you know, we have some major improvements looking at down the line. And basically, this debt type of, uh, restructuring is what needs to be done with renovation. Uh, the, uh, the, I think the O and M versus capital project. The other thing we talked about was this whole discussion about fund balance. And we can designate fund balance toward improvements. Uh, you know, we're kind of behind right now, so, you know, I think we probably need to do the $10 million, but I, I'd love to see that we could someday start funding these things out of operations. I don't know if that's simply to be doable, but, you know, at least designate some of that fund balance that exists to remove that discussion off the table. And the designation would have to be in the O and M fund or operations main fund. We may transfer to a capital projects fund or reserve it in some way. But the reality is, that's kind of identifying either for future improvements, future repairs and maintenance, and maybe even technology or some other area that we literally cannot fund out of normal operations. And, uh, you know, and those are the things we're confronted with. The $80 million really doesn't deal with technology. It doesn't deal with any of those things. So, you know, again, I, I really would highly suggest in the, you know, as we move forward and improving this document, or this modification, that we reserve that fund balance for those type of items and not to lend itself to the confusion that it's some kind of operating reserve, you know, or some, you know, big law that we have, because it really isn't. Uh, so, and I think those are kind of the, you know, the big picture of this and, uh, you know, and where we are is where we are and I don't know, we have too many choices with it. So, um, you know, I guess that's kind of the conclusion we had at the, at the committee and, uh, you know, as part of the explanation in the community of why we're doing this. It's not, it's not a repetition, it's not anything but, you know, the age of our buildings and requirements that keep them up.
Thank you, Mr. Matheson. Mrs. Swanson?
Yeah, I want to, I want to just chime in. And first of all, I want to say thank you very much for Mr. Roman, Mr. Matheson for holding on the board here while he was, uh, out enjoying the sun down in Florida. So thank you very much. And, uh, from what I'm able to glean from your reports tonight, as well as Dr. Harris did fill me in a little bit of summary as to what the meeting entailed, I couldn't agree more with, with where you guys landed. I particularly, the fund balance wording sounds, let me just clarify because you said to go to the capital projects, but I thought I understood it was just going to be designated in O and M until such time perhaps as we choose to move it to capital projects.
You will see a draft of the policy at the board at March board meeting, but I, I'll just paraphrase here. I've got the background under where, where we landed. Uh, it simply says such balance in excess of 25% to the capital projects fund for capital projects identified in the capital facility unit. So now, we can always edit that. That was wherever we believe we landed in our conversation. So, uh, capital projects is wide range. It could be things identified and also be capital purchases, like the technology is capital. Uh, there's other items that fall into that. So the board would always have that discretion. So that's the wording where we landed on the draft. Uh, that will be brought forward at the March board meeting. We can always edit it accordingly.
The only reason I suggest maybe you go back and relook at your notes is my understanding is, is that the O and M would, um, work toward our overall fund balance, uh, whereas capital projects would not. And therefore, if we designated some money into, into the capital projects, it wouldn't allow us to also count that toward our fund balance, let's just say if auditors were, um, if the state's looking that way, incorrect?
I think that you're absolutely correct. And I think we, because of that, we were talking about a designation of the O and M fund versus a transfer to the, uh, capital fund, or really depending on the amounts involved. The thing that we have to, again, guard against for our financial rating, which affects everything we do, including the interest rates that are charged on the bonds, is created by a percentage of the revenues in the operating funds and only the operating funds. So, you know, so if we move it literally to the O and M, you know, we probably, I guess the real wording would be, we want to reserve it or designate it in the operating fund so that when we need to move it, we can put it in the capital projects fund. And that depends deficit spending issues and all kinds of things that are, you know, technical to that side. But, you know, I think you're, you're right on the eye of what we're concerned about in the local, if I can say.
And maybe I didn't make myself clear. Uh, it's only, what is in excess of 25% that gets designated to the capital.
May, may it. I'm just gonna clarify for everybody, we may designate it if we still choose. And again, I'm just gonna stick my heels in here about this, don't use the word capital projects, but we use the word, uh, O and M fund because that allows us to, am I correct, Mr. Farley? That allows us to move it if we wish to in the capital projects fund, but not, uh, O and M.
I think the real recommendation there would be a basically designated in the O and M fund and when we need it, move it. I, I think that's the original.
Sorry, we have a little finance committee meeting here, but since I wasn't there, I just wanted to be clear on that. And also, um, I, I do very much agree with the recommendation to go ahead and, uh, issue the full $10 million worth of, uh, bonds, uh, for all the reasons that you stated. And my additional reason, and I really thought about this because I think Dr. Harris was the one who talked about having a mix of, you know, local money and, and all of that. But, you know, uh, because our buildings are, uh, old and ongoing, uh, by issuing bonds, to my mind, it allows the cost of that, uh, building maintenance to be spread across the people who will use those buildings in the future, as well as just taking it from our current funds, which really hit more the current taxpayers. And so I, I feel it's a more equitable way of looking at the ongoing refreshment of our buildings. So just, just my philosophy on that, but it's right in tune with what, um, you both said. So I take it then this is the recommendation from the finance committee to move ahead with the $10 million, uh, full, uh, issuance of the bonds if the community allows. Am I correct?
As far as I know, you are. Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was our conclusion at the meeting.
Thank you once again for, for doing that work.
One other quick follow-up, Mr. Farley explained this. We, uh, because we are in the bond process, we did have an update on our bonding capacity. Well, Mr. Farley updated the board where we just got the report back from Standard Report.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Yes, we did hear back from S and P relative to our bond rating amendments. Board is aware, um, you know, we're at a double A minus right now with a stable outlook. Um, the process to change your bond rating is, uh, similar, doesn't occur overnight. Uh, we were, um, happy to, we are happy to report that S and P did change our rating from, uh, our, from stable to positive. And I'd like to read the outlook, which is kind of the final paragraph of the report, which we, uh, they finalized today, that this, uh, the positive outlook reflect, I need to rephrase this. The positive outlook reflects Standard Report's expectation that the district will maintain its very strong reserve levels and its combined educational O and M and working cash fund, cash available fund while managing capital needs. If the district reserves continue to improve and maintain structural balance while addressing its capital needs, we will very likely raise the rating within a two-year parameter of the outlook. However, should the district fail to maintain at least very strong reserve levels in its available funds or experiences budget pressure, we could return the rating to stable. District participation in the diverse Chicago metro area and strong income levels provide further support to the current rating and outlook. So, uh, we got a positive, uh, movement. Again, it's non-incremental. They've told us from the start that, um, you know, that they want to see continued growth. They obviously put a lot of onus on our reserves. First question I got in the hour and a half interview was, what are you doing? Uh, we see transfers from your O and M fund. Uh, where, where's that money going and what is it used for? So they're obviously very cognizant of our fund balance and they're very, I think, we talked to the last time, we had the improvement, you know, they talked, they were very happy that we had a fund balance policy in place. So again, I think that's, again, a credit to continued growth, balanced budgets, uh, and then fund reserve being strong.
It also will impact those refinances that we're going to pledge to do over the next five years. So we hope to see movement over the next year or two as we refinance those build, those bonds become callable. That's huge. That's a huge amount of, you know, the fees and the interest rate and all the things that go into that. So, uh, that's significant. And that's why it's critical we continue to maintain that attention total over a period of time.
All right, who else would like to speak? Mrs. Cargill?
I just want to thank you for all your work and it's so detailed and, uh, but I'm not on that committee. But Jim, I especially appreciate that explanation you just had, and I loved that copies of your paperwork because it, it was, it explains, I think, and it's gonna probably have to be said many times at different meetings, to the community as to, you know, why we don't have the funds necessary to maintain our buildings and, and, and all our bills and costs. So, I mean, that's the crux of it. That's just the bottom line, the reality of it. And if we could just educate, just like we are doing at, uh, Engage 200, then it'll, you know, make sense. And I think people actually should be amazed that we do as well as we do with the funds we have. Thank you.
If there's no other question, I want to summarize a couple of things. All board groups are aware of the action items that will be coming forward over the next couple of meetings. Uh, the resolution and the issuance of the $10 million of bonds will be action items at a special meeting coming up on the 26th at 7:00 p.m. So we will be holding that special meeting prior to our regular community board meeting.
And the resolution is a resolution to implement, in essence, the PMA strategy of refinancing callable bonds will be next five years.
To level out our debt so we don't have those peaks to taxpayers over a period of time. We'll level it out along with the issuance of these $10 million of bonds. Uh, and then the other item, as Mr. Menter, we just got done discussing, the policy will be brought forward to the board at the March board meeting to post the policy change to the fund balance policy. And then we will subsequently then, uh, be an action item at the April meeting to approve it. There's any questions about those items. We'll be showing up on the agenda in the next two months.
Mr. Paulson had a...
Wasn't going to, but thank you. No, I just wanted, you know, there was some discussion at the last meeting about taking that $10 million project and using some of our fund balance and some of those bonds. I'm in support of not doing it. I'm in support of doing the full $10 million. It sounds like that's what the finance committee was as well. The thing that keeps in the back of my mind is Jefferson. And as we eventually move towards another solution, I think, um, I'd like to preserve some additional capacity within that fund balance to make the potential solution more attractive to voters if we have to go that route. So, um, I'm, I'm in full favor of the plan that you have in right now and in the future for that time and now.
Mr. Giammi?
Well, I just want to weigh in since I can. Uh, I'm, I'm very pleased with the finance committee recommendation. I think the resolution to, uh, to refinance the bonds as they come, become callable, uh, will, will, you know, show our commitment to the community that we will honor our, 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 our fiscal responsibilities. Um, I, I think we should, I agree that we should borrow the full $10 million. The way I see it, you know, we have a number of, of ways, as Mr. Roman pointed out, to pay for improvements, just like you do in your home. You either save your money or even if you want to buy a car, you can save your money and then pay cash for your car. Or when you need a new car, if you don't have the money saved because you have not been able to, to, to do so, then you finance the car. So, so, you know, it, it is all taxpayer money. So we could have, I suppose, if we didn't have the tax cap, overtaxed our District 1 to save money to then... all along to save money to then, you know, do these improvements or be in a position as we are now where we've been very prudent, very frugal. We get our operating expenses pretty much be covered by our revenue. So, we're in balance, but we don't have much extra to spend or set aside to save for new roofs. So, I thank you, all of you, especially Mr. Madison, Mr. Roman, Mrs. Swenson, for all your work on the Finance Committee to come up with this solution for us and dive it forward to our committee. Thank you. Any other comments or questions before we end the discussion?
One last comment, and that is that, you know, we've concluded based on some recommendations from the administration, obviously, we do a ten million dollar amount. I mean, we could have done more than that and, you know, to max these out. And I think it was predicated on what I would call the most significant changes now are needs. And I think there's six, seven million dollars, something like that. And I would hope as we monitor and we go along here, if we don't, you know, that we pick and choose the right ones and hopefully we'll have some savings or some grant money, which will then be, if that were to occur, that would be available for other events in the future and/or, you know, the technology or, you know, the other stuff that pays in or something in the future. So, so I think again, you know, we're not going to the maxing weekend. And, you know, I, again, I think we just need to make sure we continually monitor what we are going to do and so on.
Okay. Our next discussion item is our middle school co-curricular program. Dr. Harris?
Okay. I would like to draw the board members' attentions to a document in the green folders, and I'm going to comment briefly on that, kind of set the stage for discussion here this evening. And board members remember, at our last board meeting, we had our middle school principals here, and they presented a summary of our current programming. They presented a summary of a survey that they sent to parents, how we ended our current programming of what they would be interested in if we expanded it. We also presented their thoughts of where this sits in their priorities as our leaders in our middle schools. Since that time, I've had not only follow-up conversations with our middle school principals, also with our high school leadership, because we did have some conversation around that. The board asked to put this back on the agenda for further discussion this evening. I had also, if I remember correctly, asked that the administration bring forth a recommendation with some rationale. So, bear with me. I typically do not read, but I'm going to make sure that I clearly state the reasoning behind where, you know, the staff recommends we move forward on this particular topic at this time. I'm gonna tell you on a personal level, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, both of my own kids were B-team participants in middle school in this conference that we're part of, you know, not too many years ago. And so I understand the value from the parent perspective, from the student perspective. It integrated. I've said this often, though, when we get into these budget programming types of decisions, we can do anything, we can't do everything. And really, that's where this boils down to. It becomes a decision. Now, we have the staff, also at the board table, about where this particular item sits and where, and I believe we really have to consider it in the big picture. And as superintendent, it would be remiss of me not to, you know, preference this conversation without saying that. So, you know, the administrative recommendation is going to, board, for considerations we look for is not to include the middle school B sports in the programming for the fourteen, fifteen school year. Okay? And I want to lay out a few rationale behind, some information behind this. And some of this might be new information, some of it's not. In following up to middle school principals, they stated over and over, and our conversation went right back to that in the follow-up conversation after the last board meeting. They have prioritized other needs, they believe, as the leaders at that level, to impact student learning and holistically student learning. Class size, technology, reading and math support, facility improvements, professional developments of staff, they believe are a higher priority at this time than the co-curricular program that we're speaking in this meeting. They believe that, flat out told me, if you have a hundred and sixty thousand dollars you want to give us, we've got other things that we would do in place of that if it does become a budget decision. Middle school principals have also been very clear to me that they have significant concerns about increasing participation fees. That was a solution that was discussed about raising the fee. They think it would have, and know that it would have a negative impact on participation. They are very concerned about that. They have a very high participation in all of our activities right now. And if we raised the fee to cover the costs of this, it would have an impact on kids that participate, not only in these particular sports, in basketball and volleyball, but also in cross country, wrestling, track, and so on. They are very concerned about that. I also had the opportunity to follow up with our high school leadership. Had a very lengthy meeting with the principals, assistant principals, and athletic directors at the high school level about looking at twofold, the fee participation conversation as well as the impact at the high school level on the program. And again, I'm gonna refer to my notes here to make sure I don't misrepresent that conversation. The high school administration cannot support increasing athletic fees to reinstate middle school B sports before considering reductions that were made at the high school level at the same time, that four years ago, when we made the budget reductions to get the budget in order. They also had impact in their levels. They had B teams at certain programs that were eliminated as well. They also limited their activities in some of their co-curricular programs. They believe that has more of an impact than what happens at this level from their perspective. They also have other funding priorities in the athletic programs. And again, with the same conversation, if they had additional dollars for co-curricular, it would not necessarily be targeted in this direction. They shared concerns about other programs, such as swimming and lacrosse. Two particular programs where we have high participation fees right now in swimming, and that was a direct result. The board members that were here, remember that. There's a fee, a huge fee for our current swimmers at both high schools to participate in that program. It's because we can't support it within the district for the whole run. Lacrosse, it's an emerging sport. That issue is going to be in front of us soon. And we, you know, it's going to be a decision point real soon whether we add boys and girls lacrosse at the high school level. The IHSA has tabled it for now, but it's been on their agenda for the last couple of years. The high school athletic directors are concerned about it. It's a high participation sport. We have a lot of community members, a lot of kids involved in that. They also do not believe that the lack of middle school B teams has had an impact directly on the girls volleyball and/or the basketball programs at our high schools. They don't believe that to be the case. That is straight from the athletic directors at both schools. The final thing, in generation of additional fees, and I had suggested that, we had talked about that, the middle school principals suggested that as one of the solutions if we were generating additional revenue. And again, and I've got all the detail behind this statement here, if I had been here, is to generate a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in additional revenue to run these programs. The middle school and high school fee would have to be increased by fifty dollars per sport, as well as adding the rental fee at both levels, to be able to generate that type of revenue. The middle school fee would increase from one point five to one seventy-five, and the high school fee from one fifty to two hundred. We would also need to charge a ten dollar rental fee at both levels, again, to offset these additional costs. This would place our athletic fees at the highest among all of our comparable districts. There would be a high speed of anywhere around us to participate both at the middle school level and at the high school level and our programs. And that's all programs. Every student participating. I've got all the numbers here. If there are any specific questions about the number of fees we collect at any level of this. So therefore, all of these factors I just mentioned, and thank you for bearing with me, and even to try and, you know, provide that rationale of why, believe at this time, is that it is the right decision to not re-implement those programs. And it's not an easy recommendation from the staff, it's not from the principals at any level, it's not necessarily the central office or myself. However, you know, in context with everything else and all the items I stated there, that's where the administration sits. And I certainly want to open up the board discussion and simply to answer any questions we have on this topic.
Mr. Paulson?
First off, I want to thank Pam, at least I think they're back there, for your diligence on this matter. The thing that's unique from, I think, new on the board, your focus on kids and the fact that you're willing to have the conversation and talk rather than yell makes your, makes the topic be heard by us. So, obviously, we have more people like you actually in our community, so thank you. I guess I'll start my conversation, my perspective. I think I've shared, you know, my own perspective, personality, certainly understanding the technical, Dr. Harris's comments, understanding the value of participating at the middle school level, B team sports. The other perspective is one of my daughter, who did not get to participate in volleyball at Edison, but she has had no shortage of other opportunities to be busy at Edison. In fact, I don't know how she can do what you've been doing if she also had volleyball. So, I understand that perspective. It's kind of my head and my heart. My heart says, you know, there's great value in this experience. My head says, it's a huge cost. You know, for me, I look at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it's two or three teachers a year, I'm guessing. I don't know how you get two or three teachers for a dime, you know, if you had those teachers during my time. So, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how that math works, but it's a hundred and forty, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars every year is not to say it's fifty thousand dollars for a community engagement consultant for one year. So, I think that the argument is a little bit different than I believe it. There's so many other things on our plate. I've heard from other people in the community who do not support this. I think there's other issues that are ahead of us, such as one-to-one technology initiative, that I think we have the opportunity to support all kids, not just roughly two hundred kids that go to middle school sports. We are so far behind in one-to-one technology compared to our peer districts. I see it all the time. I think that's a huge impact on kids all the way through high school and what they're doing in college or their careers. With that said, I just support doing something. I think we've gotten a little bit confused by putting all this underneath the B-team sports label. You know, I think we're not really trying to, from my understanding, the objective is not to do B-team sports. The objective is to increase, getting kids active, increasing school spirit, teamwork, not giving interest in the sport. B-team is just the label that we're all familiar with because that's what we're used to. I think the threat of conferences has bothered the conversation a little bit. So, what I'm very interested in doing is exploring, I think I might mention this when we were at Edison, is some kind of in-district conference where just the four middle schools can play. You know, we could easily have a twelve, I think, and there's a cost to that, I understand, but have a twelve game in the district schedule where the three, each middle school can play two home games, two road games against the other three middle schools. Maybe there's a way to save costs, I'm not sure if that's possible, but, you know, one end in uniforms is one of the costs, is that there's a way for the PTAs to support, they're always supporting technology investments, or a way for them to help collaborate and decide their elementary schools that go to the middle school to help support uniforms. I guess, I understand the whole thing, I want to do something. I value that I'm not totally supportive of spending a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of our fund balance, given all the other needs that it actually do. I'd love to see a more creative solution, which gives opportunity for those kids to participate in some fashion. And I think we could do, I hope that we can do without the B-team label because I think that's just a lot of the conversation. So, that's kind of my perspective. I want to do it. We can't afford to spend a hundred and sixty thousand. There's too many other needs. I have to take the recommendation of our administrators and our educators, you know, they're the experts in this field. So, that's kind of my perspective.
Anyone else? Mrs. Carrigan?
I have just gone back and forth on this. It is so difficult. One argument that the principals, and I totally get it that if they could have that money, they could put it probably somewhere else, but it's not like they're getting that money. It's a choice of, you get the B-team or nothing, you know, because it's just going to stay in our general funds. I guess I agree, I am so torn. If, I guess would the question be that if we're not putting this hundred and fifty over in this, in the B-team sports bucket, is that hundred and fifty, it's just going to stay there or be used elsewhere? It's not an either or, or we're going to put it into technology, or we're going to take this now, but we haven't been using it anyway. It's just more of an argument of not taking it out of our pocket and putting it over here, you know?
It currently does not exist. I mean, we do not have it in the current budget. So, this would be an addition by subtraction, or you generate additional revenue. So, you know, that, at the last meeting, you know, for our budget, make sure we're chasing about one point three million dollar expense deficit. So, if we added this back down, it'd be, you know, you have another hundred and sixty thousand dollars to that. So, it means we, that's three more teachers, that's whatever else we look at to try and bring our budget into balance. That's the decision point. You know, and what I'm saying is, I would prefer not to include this into that equation and add, you know, and add to that, you know, expense reallocation that we already have to bring about this budget for the board for next quarter.
I think what you were asking, I may be wrong, as well, is, you know, if we take money out of fund balance, let's say, to pay for B-team sports, we are in effect deficit spending. And then if we're deficit spending, then, you know, that affects our credit rating, that affects our standing with ISBE. So, we don't have money to take out of a fund balance to use for this purpose. It has to be, we have to make, we have to cut somewhere else in terms of our ongoing expenses to do that. So, we would maybe have to cut three teachers or, you know, make it cut somewhere else.
Mrs. Paulson?
Follow-up. Did we ever have any feel for if we did just a new, if we now four schools, what kind of cost that one would entail?
It would not change a lot. It would, you know, it may limit it a little bit, but we still have the coaching stipend, which is the most significant piece of the expense. We still have, you know, the transportation would be limited, you know, so there'd be some reduction there. We still have the officials, we still have, you know, some of those costs that we talked about. The most important is the coaching segment. I mean, that is the most significant component of this whole thing. That still exists no matter what solution we look at, if we run it in a interscholastic environment.
Just to clarify that, that's not a choice we had. If we offer this program, our teachers by contract get the first choice. We can't just say, oh, we have six parents in the school that are your coach. And I'm genuine. We could, we'd agree. We don't want to do that.
Yeah, you know, clearly, it's, I want to thank everyone involved in this conversation, and I hope you can, everyone involved can see that this is a difficult conversation for us at the board level. Clearly, it's something we're all struggling with and have, you know, conflicting ideas about. And Dr. Harris, I want to thank you for struggling with this ever since you've really come on board. It was something that you kind of tried, it was really something that you inherited, you know, and it was a, at the time, as, you know, has been brought out several times, that was a difficulty, took us two years to get to that point because there was, you know, concern about whether or not this was where the community wanted to be. And I supported that at that time and have supported it all along, kind of the head and the heart sort of thing that Mr. Paulson was talking about. I have to say, my heart, my head's still in the same place, but my heart is prevailing over my head at this point. And I think, let me just say, I've thought about it, thought about it, two things. First of all, our role as board members is, get this drilled into us all the time at IASA, is to detect the will of the community. Not to, not to, you know, necessarily shape it or, you know, survey it, but in many different ways, to detect the will of the community. And I just feel over all the years, this has been something that has come back to us and come back to us and come back to us. So, that to me is something that says, this is, this is something important to the community. I think also, if you just look at how our community generally functions, they, they all show up for the high school games. They all, you know, there's a big interest in our part that runs all of these programs. And I think that's indicative of that the community appreciates. And I think that's indicative of that the community appreciates a vital sports program. So, in my opinion, this is kind of where the community, and also I would say, Mr. Madison, you said something at one meeting, you talked about being at a Wheaton City Council meeting where an advisor was saying, you know, you have to think about how we market ourselves, let's say, what the package is. And I think there's a sense that not having this element makes the, our school district perhaps somewhat less desirable than other school districts. It's a small, but, but I think there's that sense. So, put that all together, and I guess I'm coming to the conclusion that this is something that the community values and would like to see happen. Now, as to how we make that happen, there's the big problem. And it, it seems to me that we, maybe we've been framing this question, it got framed wrongly. And part of the reason is, is that we did talk about reinstituting various cuts when, when funds would allow. And I think when this conversation first started coming up, we, that we had a number of years of balanced budgets, our five-year projection at that time, last year looked like it was going to be respectable. And so, I think there was a sense that we were past that point where now we could start thinking about, maybe we do have an additional hundred and sixty thousand dollars we could get from somewhere. As it's turned out, in the midst of this discussion, we do not have that. So, so I think we need to get rid of that view of the conversation of, of, you know, adding it in, but that doesn't mean that we can't take another look and say, are there things that could be realigned? And in any, if, if Mrs. Dahlquist was doing something in the academic field, she would get together with the departments that were involved and they would determine how to realign the money to make that happen if they felt it was something that needed to happen. She wouldn't say, we need to cut some club programs in order to get Spanish, let's say, as an example. So, I guess what I'm saying is, why not, instead of us trying to nuggle out, you know, is it intramural, is it this, is it that, is it an increase, is it that? Why not go to our professionals, which are our athletic department and say, you know, this B-team element is important to the community, how can we make this work within the budget that we have to work with? Now, I know that's in essence probably what we did, but on the other hand, if you go back and say, you know, the board has determined this is where the community is at, now make that happen, that's a little bit different, I think, than, you know, it's a mandate for the community is, I guess what I'm saying. Now, that's my perception. The rest of the board members may not agree with that. But that's kind of where I'm coming out on it, is to say, like Mr. Paulson, I'd like to do something. I'd like to turn it over to our athletic people and say, you figure out how to do this. Because I do feel like, although it says here that it hasn't impacted them, it certainly seems to me we're lacking the message that they have felt impacted by it to some extent. And that's a little mixed message for me. So, I guess I would like to turn it back to them and say, what is the program that we should be doing with the budget that we have and see how they develop? So, that's kind of where I'm at on this.
With that, it would be addition by subtraction, I'm not so sure. Maybe that's, that's all that happened?
Yes, but, but they would subtract from their pot, is what I'm trying to say. And, and, and then see what happens. And I think kind of like Mr. Paulson said, it doesn't have to be just the B-team as we know it. They could come up with a different program configuration, they could say, we'd like to slightly increase some fees, we'd like to, you know, perhaps there is a program of theirs that doesn't have as much attendance. And I'm just saying, they should take a look at this and come back to us, would be my approach, and say, here's, here's how to do it. But as to whether or not I think we ought to try to get it back into the program, my answer at this point would be yes, but using that method.
Mr. Madison?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it just somewhat differently. I, I think we've looked at, you know, this thing as a given sport, and I don't know if that's appropriate. I think one of the things I've heard is, being the board members, how the middle school children are hyperactive and all the things, they're, they're the most bouncing off the walls. And I think, you know, the, the involvement, whether they're a player or a spectator or whatever, is a way to release that. And I, and I accordingly, you know, I think that, I think it's a bigger picture than just whether there's, you know, a hundred kids on the, on the B-team or not. I think also, we've talked about in the past about foundational funding. You know, all we're talking about here is raising fees to do this, do that. I've heard commentary from community members that, you know, they're willing at this point to do some ways of raising money. You know, had we not had that kind of community involvement, would we have stopped the basketball program in North because we couldn't play in Florida anymore? I mean, that was a major commitment done to the parents of North to raise money there and, and so on and so. I mean, I think we have an untapped community foundational potential. You know, there's other districts in this area that have raised a lot of money and they use that money to fund things. And we have not done that. We've got a, foundations have not been around for a long time, they're not actively been around. And I, maybe, you know, I think when I look in the bigger picture and I start looking down the road, we, we might be talking about sports in general there one day if we don't get other funding sources for this. And we, you know, we can't, you know, just purely, you know, I've gone to a lot of Friday night football games and I, and there's a lot of kids there and a lot of fun going on. You know, and if we start looking at everything based on the specific policy program, we're losing something there and I, and I have a little problem with that. So, I, you know, I'd like to do the challenge of, you know, just trying to get the foundational type motivation going, you know, and maybe, you know, that's how we start funding some of these. Because we're going to be, we're looking at, you know, this projection we had the other day, we have a million and a half dollar deficit. You know, this item, that's a big picture issue, you know, in our projections. And so, we have a lot of choices to make. And I, you know, again, you know, I don't know what, what are we going to drop, what are we going to do? If we, you know, we need help funding things, I guess. And, you know, I just, I, I would like to see us proceed with this and find a way to support it. If we can't get that support from the community without raising a fee, it should be just addressed to the student, player, or whatever, you know, but try to get some mechanism going, and I'll call it foundation type program, that will expand beyond this. And but we have community support that proceeded in this. You know, there's an after group, and those were, I think your comments were very tuned in, where this has been a lasting, ongoing conversation. This isn't, just popped up recently and so on and so. You know, I, you know, I, I really, I think again, bigger picture, I like the, I hope asking the community on the community engagement program, what do you want? Well, I'm hearing this is a want. So, you know, I, I really do believe that we need to try and address these problems. Maybe we do cut something. I've heard about a language arts program that maybe cut it or, or, you know, or some component of it. I don't know that. And it, but there's issues I would deal with in that budget that's adding and supporting and so on. So, I, I think again, it's, we can't look at this as an isolated thing, we have to look at it in the whole big picture. Or maybe we talk about sports in general, can we afford that down to that? I don't know. You know, so this is one component of the whole educational process and I, and I really have trouble just looking at it as an isolated, you know, a hundred kids on a basketball for, or a sports for. So, you know, I, I agree that it's, the community is speaking, it's been speaking a long time and, you know, I'm, I'm supportive of this and I, I think we just have to find a way to fund it along with others. Maybe, maybe it's a source of revenue we don't have right now. And I, I'd really like to get someone, Matt, to go in on a foundation, you know, and that, you know, maybe is a byproduct of the finance component of the community engagement program. You know, let's get some going there. There's a lot of money out there in other communities that we're not gathering, so that would be my comment.
Anyone else? No, Mr. Gannan?
It's been well said. I think Mrs. Swanson, Mr. Madison, Brad, you too. I, I support B-team sports. Now, I think like anything, we have to make choices. And whether it's addition by subtraction or wherever the case may be, the, the community has spoken and I think we need to be into that as, as Rob and Mary said. So, I would support it and I think we just need to figure out whether it's addition by subtraction or whatever, we just have to, we're going to have to make a choice to accommodate this, this need, if you will. A great comment, I don't know if I wrote it down, detect the pulse of the company, the community, well said. So, no, no question about Dr. Harris's choices, very, this is one of those. And I would just encourage maybe the staff to take, take another quick look at it before we, you know, put it to bed.
First of all, Amy, so I sympathize and empathize with you tremendously. Our four kids play middle school sports, enjoy cross country, do wrestling a lot. We've also been cut from sports when we know how difficult that is. And I want to echo Brad's comment about how it's very respectful and encouraging comments, hopeful comments are, it's a nice change of pace and I appreciate that pretty much. This is probably one of the hardest decisions to be as board faces, I've done, where it respects the emotions that this has generated. And I'm sure like many of our awesome sleepovers, and I really sincerely. We'd say that the community has spoken about this and there has been emails we've received that have been tremendous. I've received more emails on this one topic since I've been on the board than all the other topics combined. And we know about the survey and I would have much more reliance on the community speaking. If the survey said, would you want B-team sports restored? Which was overwhelmingly yes. And if yes, what would you like to have cut? But that second question wasn't asked. So, I have to temper the response to the survey because it didn't ask the response to make suggestions on where cuts should be made or how the funds should be allocated. The assumption by many in the surveys, we just have money, it's there somehow, you know, we can just find it. And PMA pointed out very pointedly some weeks ago that we don't have the money. And we're going to face a deficit of one point, five million dollars for next year and the deficit will continue afterwards. And Dr. Harris and his staff have a very difficult job ahead of them to try to balance the budget for next year. In fact, my first thing on the board, one of the first things we did was approve effective technology theme plan that Dr. Harris and I introduced to the board several months before. And we have been able to fully fund that program. That was, that's originally valuable because we don't have revenues. We have short form. And so, we're not, we're not fully funding that and we're not being able to achieve the technology performance that we want because we just don't have the revenues to support that. And we're being asked now to find money within the budget to support B-team. Now, it may not be the four hundred sixty thousand, maybe increased fees you could do and some other things. But the bottom line for me is that if we're going to restate B-team sports, it's going to have to be the money outside of the budget, outside of the foundational support, fee raises, maybe some other programs that Brad's described, but it can't take away from our existing commitments to curriculum and the education of students that we're delivering. I went through, when we talked about the fund balance and issuing the bonds, my analysis, I'm not going to bore you all of that. But the bottom line is, when we talk about other school districts who have B-team sports, they have higher equalized access values for their families, they have a higher tax rate, and they have more commercial property within the boundaries of their district than we unfortunately do. So, they're able to generate revenue that we just don't have. I don't know if we're able to sign this information. For example, we talked about Neighborhood 203, they're spending, instructional spending per student at seven thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars in 2010, we're at seven thousand one seventy-four. So, somewhere within that extra seven hundred dollars, they're finding proceeds to fund B-team sports, which we don't have. Now, versus District 205, they're spending per student at seven nine hundred dollars, about eight hundred dollars more per student than we did in 2010. So, they have the revenue to do that. As I said, I've looked at what our, our experts have been, they've asked, we're not being thankful, we're not, I don't think wasting money. And I love to see our ratio of administrators and students compared to our benchmark districts. For every administrator, we have 283 students. And Neighborhood 203, it's one student for every 210, I mean, one administrator for every 210, 18 students, 216 students, I'm sorry. And for St. Charles, it's one student, one administrator for 271 students. There, if they're off the charts, they have one administrator for every 205 students. Where are we at, at the extreme end of that as far as administrators per student, teachers per student, any criteria we look at? We learned at the Siftey team meeting on Monday, we were talking about student performance. We made cuts in a curriculum superintendent, assistant superintendent curriculum department ten, five years ago as well. In District 200, we have one curriculum administrator for every 4,000 students. And so, we have what, 3.3, is it 3.3 administrators within your curriculum, your department? And Neighborhood, they have one curriculum administrator for every 1,700 students. In St. Charles, they have one curriculum administrator for every 1,250 students and 11 other administrators supporting the superintendent curriculum there. And this is at a time where all these districts are adopting and implementing the core and facing the other challenges. And yet, we haven't restored those, those, that administrative state for our curriculum when we're facing these challenges. It tears me apart though, we can't restore B-team sports. Well, I have to know exactly what we're going to cut if we're going to restore B-team sports out of our revenues. And no one has identified what it is. They've been willing for us to cut in abandon in order to restore B-team sports. Now, I have no problem at all going back to athletic administrators and seeing what they think they can do. I have a sense though, that if they do rejigger their budget, we're going to have parents from lacrosse or swimming or B-team baseball, some coming in speaking because their programs will have been impacted somehow. There's going to be some parent, some family that's going to be impacted by rejiggering the athletic programs. I'm just assuming that, and I, I would love to be surprised if that would be the case. But I have no objection to asking the athletic directors to do that. And I think Brad's suggestion of trying to maybe fashion some other alternatives where we can give the equivalents of B-team sports experience to kids if we find it. And I agree with Jim. Boy, if we can find some foundational support, which is flagged here in the next 10 or so years, to support the sports program and more of B-team sports, that would be great. I'd also like to find some foundational support for technology, I'd also like to find some foundational support for a lot of other programs in our curriculum. So, I know a number of people have spoken on this, the survey, and all of them appreciate the survey. I think the survey was a little skewed as I've explained. Like Brad, I've encountered a number of people who questioned whether we should restore B-team sports or the revenues that are available to us. But when you're not, when you're against something like that, you don't come to a board with you to speak and say, I'm against that. People just don't do that and it's understandable when you come to put the deal approach on it. So, bottom line is, Dr. Harris, is that if we can find some other sources of funds other than our revenues, you know, and, and the budget that you're working with to restore sports or some other sort of program, fine, go back to the athletic directors, that's fine. But I, I'm right now against putting it in the budget and taking away on something else.
Couple of points I just wanna comment on this program. One of them was, in that particular survey, you're right, we did not ask the parents to say, if you added this, what would you take out? We asked them the other question, would you pay an additional fee? And the majority of the respondents had said, yes, they did say we could pay a higher fee. I'm not sure that they knew how much, we did not specify how much. We did not ask the high school parents that question, the survey was limited to middle school. Just a couple of points there. You are correct, we're talking about 24 stipends. Okay, 24 stipends in our collective bargaining group. That is the primary, that is $100,000 of this cost. It is the primary piece. If we were to go back to our funding budgets, it's 24 stipends. So we're gonna look for 24 stipends across grade six through 12 to do this. That, I mean, that's really, it's like when you're chasing $1.3 million, you can't do a supply budget. You don't have any supply budget, it's $1.3 million, it's staff, it's 20 teachers. Okay? I mean, that has to be, that's what it is. And, you know, so that, you know, if we were to do that, you know, and I've heard that from a couple of people, it's 24 stipends. So you are correct. We'll be looking at levels, we will probably be looking at participation rates in some of the sixth floor, middle schools, high schools, to make this play out this year, under the current revenue stream.
Mr. Smith? Go ahead. I'm certainly looking forward to our discussions on the $1.4 million ballot changes. If this is a table discussion on 160, that's very well. I think we're also setting a tone, in my mind, for anything we do, if we're gonna look at this critically, whether it be virtual learning, whether it be community engagement, and so on, that, you know, we're really looking at every nickel and dime here, and maybe that's what we need to do, but, you know, again, I just, you know, I think we're looking at this a real, you know, we're looking at this like an isolated circumstance, and, you know, I'm not sure that the whole process doesn't have to be part of this. I'm a little troubled by how critically and analytically we're looking at this piece. I think, again, there's other components that we're gonna be dealing with when we deal with the $1.4. We did not have this discussion, we had the virtual learning discussion, we didn't have it when we, when we talked about community engagement costs, and so on. So, I think, again, if we're gonna set that tone, I look forward to that and looking at it. You know, I don't know that, you know, those are, again, the specific, we have to define appreciation of costs, I guess, is my point.
I respond to that. The community engagement is the one time expenditure, and it was in the budget for this year, all right? The virtual learning was in the budget for this year, and it's a goal of the superintendent, is to meet, that was agreed upon by all seven of us. So if we're gonna do something about virtual learning, we're gonna have to rejigger the goals of the superintendent. But that was a commitment that we decided upon last summer. So...
I totally agree with your comments, Mr. Madison. We had extensive conversations about community engagement, and that was delayed, at least a couple of board meetings before we made that decision, so I don't think it's, I don't think that this decision, or this discussion on B-Team Sports is that much different than what it does in previous ones.
Well, thank you everyone for your comments. I wrestle with this, as everybody here has. But I also wrestle with a number of things, and that is, you know, I believe we like to be a 30,000-foot board, and I think where we are with this discussion, and with this particular program, is we're kinda down on the dance floor. And I think what we do, if we direct the staff to reinstate B-sports, is we're letting them off the hook. We're saying to them, we're going to tell you how to give our kids good social, emotional experiences, to raise academic performance, all the goals that we set about garnering 21st century skills, we're gonna kinda let them off the hook. Because we could come with any other little program that comes along and say, okay, we want you to do X, Y, Z, A, B, C, D, E, and then, by the way, meet your goals, and then the superintendent can come in to us and say, well, you know, you didn't leave me any money to meet my goals. You told me I had to do these programs that I'm telling you I don't have money for, and that didn't leave me any money to go ahead and raise academic performance, to go ahead and give students 21st century learning skills through online classes and this consortium that we've dealt with. So I just wrestle with directing the staff to do a program that, yes, people want, yes, is good for kids, all those wonderful, good reasons. But who's to say that there aren't other things that we're doing that aren't of people and higher value? So I just, I just, I struggle with saying, I need to do this. I even struggle with the concept that Mrs. Swanson raised, why I think it's a really good concept, but if I'm looking at the athletic program as a whole, I want, if I'm the athletic director, if I'm in charge of the district's athletic program, I wanna be able to choose what I think is best for kids, given the resources that I have. So for the board to kind of direct me to say, find money for this, you know, while you're doing all the other things that you feel are important, I think limits me. So I wanna just kind of take a step back, because I think this is a slippery slope. I think we could go down the road of saying, you're gonna have this program, you're gonna have that program, you're gonna have that program, and then I'm saying, no. We dictated essentially, you know, the entire budget, and our entire budget amount, and then there's no discretion left for the staff to meet their goals. So, you know, and I, I, I'm kind of sitting, you know, right there with Mr. Roman, and I think, you know, we can't do everything. We can do anything, we can't do everything. And I think that, we need to, can we say to the staff, do your best to try to, you know, make it all work, get more kids to participate? Those are, those are very lofty goals. But to say to somebody, you must re-implement B-Team Sports, is a whole different conversation. I mean, we all, we have goals about increasing participation, we have goals about student attendance, we have goals about disciplinary cases, we have all kinds of measures. And I feel that, the experts feel that, you know, to increase or decrease the disciplinary incidents at the middle school, that this is something that's very important to them, that I think they would've been here jumping up and down, saying, we need, you know, we need this. They have not. So I just don't wanna take what I feel is a responsibility of the staff, and hinge upon it and make it ours. I just think that's the wrong direction for us to take, and we can do that, you know, the next topic that'll come up, and the one after that, and the one after that, and the one after that. This board has always been focused on their goals. And I think this is a, this kind of takes us away. And it's not to say that this is that inconsistent with our goals, but to mandate that our administration do a particular program, I think is not, not the way we wanna go.
Can I respond to that? I think you actually make some very good points, and so, and I totally agree with what you're saying about the board should not be directing a specific program. So I think you're absolutely right about that. So then, I'm thinking about it, and I think, then going back to this detecting the will of the community thing, what we're hearing is that the middle school athletic program, as it currently sits, is not meeting the perceived needs of the community. I think that's what we're hearing. I could be wrong about that. And when we originally made those cuts, the idea was going to be that hopefully there would be increased participation on the, you know, the regular team, and then there'd be more opportunities, let's say, entry here. Somewhere along the line, that hasn't done it for the community. Either that hasn't actually happened as well as we thought it should, or the experience that the kids are getting in those activities aren't being perceived as helpful as they could be. So, so maybe the way to look at it is to say, again, going back to our experts, who should be the athletic department on this, and say, you know what, redesign this middle school program, along with this, Mr. Madison, and say, if there's something else you need to align at the high school level, do that as well. But here's the goal, is to get as many or more kids involved in something, and be able to have the experience that they're longing for, with the competition, the coaching, you know, the skills development, the feeling of belonging, whether that's an intramural sort of thing, whether it's something totally different, but there's something here that keeps coming back to us, and what we have now is not, is not meeting the needs.
So, do you think that would be needed?
Yes, just ignore it.
But this is, I think it would be our last discussion on this topic. I think we need to give, for now, yeah, we need to give staff direction, and let them do what they need to do with it.
There's a couple of things coming up next month, or definitely in April. One of them is the fee schedule. The board knows, they have approved the fee schedule over the years, we started planning for enrollment, and so on, are the fee schedules co-regular? I believe we're looking at March. Isn't that when we typically do it, March? So, it'll be next month. So, I believe what I'm hearing is, now, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the board is in agreement, I believe, with staff, that increasing the fees is not an option. I did not hear anybody say that as I went around the table. I did not hear anybody say to increase the fees. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm...
I would not be in favor of increasing the fees to cover the whole cost of the program, but an incremental fee increase to cover something...
How much?
You know what?
That's, I mean, that's where we're at, okay? And we are gonna have the fee schedule for the board at the March toward me, that's the next meeting. So, you know, we have to, because we've got registrations coming out, and so, you know, I guess we do need to have that discussion. I need that direction, if that's where...
Hold that one second, Dr. Harris. Okay, before we talk about increasing fees, let's talk about, I mean, I didn't hear that we're all in agreement about directing staff to reinstate these programs. I mean, I would not propose that we should do that. And I think we need to have that discussion first. I think if we can find money to increase activities for students at all levels, you know, I mean, that's fine, but I am not going to say that I'm going to direct you to bring back B-Team Sports at the middle school level.
Anybody else want to put their stake in the ground?
I thought I was clear. If B-Team Sports are gonna be restored, they're gonna have to be restored either in finance partly by raising fees, or foundational money, some of the sorts, other than tax revenue, or revenue from the state, or revenue from the government. Because in my view, I do not want to take away something, subtract something in order to have B-Team Sports.
I don't want to direct the administration either to do this. I mean, I wanna do it, there's huge other issues facing the district, I've heard about it from many people. I believe in all those things. I agree with, this is internal, but this is not the board's position, tell everybody what to do. I agree with the observation that we gotta provide activities, whether they're physical activities or other corporate activities. There are lots of opportunities for kids in middle school, a huge number. They still have an opportunity, like basketball and volleyball right now. It's not like it doesn't exist. It exists. It doesn't exist for everyone. There's other opportunities for those students to be active. I would love to do this, but I can't tell you, from my one seventh of the voice involved to say, we have to do this. I would like to consider it, I would like to go back to our athletic program and try to come up with some other solution that doesn't have the B-Team Sports play role, because as I said, I think that's clouded the objective. The objective is not B-Team Sports, the objective is to provide all these opportunities for kids, put other ways of doing it. But I would love to provide the athletic department, but it's not like we don't have it now.
I would say that you have talked to the principals and athletic directors, this isn't, like, recently you said you had a meeting, because you were...
No, I was just...
Yeah. And it wasn't the first time you've gone around with them. So, you know, I'd like to believe and trust that they thought through it thoroughly, and, you know, did they, you know, the question, I guess, if they did, did they look at it and say, no, 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 or did they scour their budget, and really struggle with it? I, you know, that's, I guess, what I think is struggling, like, did they really, really search their hearts for it? And be able to scrounge from here or there? So I'm, I'm going to trust and believe that they did, and that they're the experts, this is a field, and, you know, how can I direct them, for me to know better than them as to what's best for kids in athletics?
I know, Dr. Harris, you said that on those conversations, where you, I sense you were wanting to comment on, because you were in the same conversations I was.
Well, we've been having these conversations since it was redupped, since it was cut. And this is an ongoing conversation that we have every year about programs and opportunities. And we understand who value B-Team, and I don't think there's any question about that any, as we talk with our athletic directors and principals, and we do, all the time, about providing opportunity for students. They struggle with ways to do that. But whatever way it is, there's an economic connection with it. There's an economic connection with whatever they program they work with. We spent a lot of time in the last two years talking about lacrosse, and can we fund lacrosse? And can we support lacrosse at the state level? When we were asked to vote on whether we would put lacrosse in the play. And we said, absolutely, we'd love to put lacrosse in. Where are we gonna get the money from? And what are you gonna cut to put lacrosse in? If you remember at the time when B-Team was taught, so was swimming, and you were on the board, there were a string of parents there, because it was a reduction of swimming, and they came and said, we need swimming, and so we support, and you got, you know, a volume of beating that was about swimming, just like you did from, from B-Team. If the athletic records could put it back in, they'd do it in a heartbeat. But they're going to reduce something else, and there will be a line of parents, because whether it's B-Team basketball, or it's swimming, or it's golf, they will come and say, I have to have that program back in, and we're back to the same place. We just don't have a place to do it, and it's not for lack of trying. We've been talking about this every year, because we know that it's a concern, and the middle schools struggle with it, the high schools struggle with it, they're looking for participation and trying to increase it. They can't get blood out of the turd of it. And we can go back and ask them again. They've been down this conversation dozens and dozens of times in the last four years. And if they could come, you can imagine, we keep coming back and saying, is there a way can you fix this? And now they're just, they don't even want to see us anymore, because they don't know where to, they don't know where to go without saying, I need 24, all right, I need 10 stipends, let's do a half, I need 10 stipends. What are you gonna cut to put those 10 stipends in? And there's just no place to get it, unfortunately. So it's not for lack of trying, or for mighty creativity, they've done their creativity as best they can. There's just no place to get it, to get it from, and from the old man on the block. Whatever you reduce, you will have a string of people who say, put this back in. And if you raise fees into high school, you'll have high school parents saying, you're increasing my fees for a middle school program, and you have to restore the program that you cut at the, at the high school level, or at the curriculum level, or in classrooms at the middle school level, and all those other kinds of cuts. Yeah. I know it's not a popular decision, it's not a popular answer, but, you know, sometimes you just can't do even the things we would love to, if we would love to.
One thing I wanna comment on, and we have not had...
One thing I want to comment on, we have not had the lacrosse conversation here at the board table, but I can tell you it's been on every high school leadership meeting for a couple of years because the IHSA has been asking our athletic directors to vote. And I, we have directed our athletic directors to vote no to reinstated stated series because we know we cannot afford it. We know we don't have field space to provide for it. We would be, if we did that, we would be talking about middle school track. Because you know where our middle school track goes right now? They go to our high school tracks, bird track. And if we do lacrosse, we don't have enough field space to do all that. I mean, this is the conversation that's going on. Just giving you a little snapshot and not going into much detail here. But this is where the athletic program, we have had this in context of everything, of the entire athletic program, that's, and they understand, I mean, maybe they truly do understand. And they're, from the leadership perspective, and that's where we've looked at this. The revenue is not there. So therefore, that's why the revenue source has to be, you know, generated, whether it's lacrosse, whether it's pool fee for swimming, whether it's middle school girls volleyball and boys girls basketball, no matter what it is. Now, if the board wants to set a goal, you know, that we re-look at our entire co-curricular program, you know, and set that goal, and we spend the year, next year doing that, great recommendations, fine. You know, I'm okay about that. Whereas actually going to be on the community engagement, is one of the topics, co-curricular is going to be one of the topics coming up in March. Still take Tigger and Liz tonight, explain that. That would be okay. We need time now to take a comprehensive look, you know, rose right back to your thought, about doing that. And it needs to be, you know, a priority at the board level to re-look at that. To implement something like this on the fly will create problems. It will create issues without a revenue, a direct revenue source.
And that's, you know, I think we're, you know, I feel the wonder of the gun right now. And I think that, you know, you know, I'm sorry we haven't had this in-depth conversation like this a little earlier. This has been on, you know, floating around for a long time. You know, and, you know, I think again, I'd like to say, one, maybe the ways we have to look at not only this program, but other lacrosse or other programs that were maybe in technology, I don't know. But I think we need to maybe investigate more of this foundational funding. I think again, maybe this could be a rallying point to, you know, identify a specific kind of program or whatever, that we could move forward and get that thing rolling. I've had conversations with other communities leaders that have had in other districts that have very successful foundations. And they, so maybe this is the rallying point that we could look at. You know, I don't know if we can coordinate this with the Park District. I don't know that we're going to be entering into negotiations in their term. One of the biggest costs we look at here is the stipend for coaching. If that has to be the only way we can do it, and we have parents for it, I don't know. You know, but these are issues that I think that, that I would like to stay committed on this program as we look forward. I'm listening to all the budget issues, and I know we have a major budget issue coming up in this coming year. So I'm getting, I'm starting to feel like we can't achieve this right now. It's, we're forcing the issue a little bit. I very highly respect your opinion about this is a community ongoing. And I think we have to magically say this is a debt or not. And, you know, unfortunately, I'm not, I'm not there yet. Maybe it's because I've been on the board long enough. But I think that, you know, we have to look at other challenges of financing that we have to do. There was a time that there was going to be a, you know, a training facility built at leading south that was going to, you know, like the bearers would want to be at, you know. And there was a lot of money, we talked about it one time about that. You know, so I mean, I think there's the opportunity to get some rally points available, whether it's lacrosse, whether it's B-team sports, whether it's technology, or whether it's anything. But, you know, maybe we got to look at that. Or, you know, the alternatives are we change tax rates and all that. And I think that's a bigger challenge than trying to get, you know, this assignment. But, so I think we got to be maybe start the creative nature of having this kind of stuff going forward. And, you know, I feel committed to this program because I think it has intrinsic values beyond, you know, whether it's, you know, whether somebody's going to become an NFL player, an NBA player because of B-team sports, because I think it's a lot bigger than that. So, you know, I think at this point, I'm, I'm more interested in the bigger picture, the budget. I don't know that I can properly justify it as I sit here today, but I want to make the commitment, just like we made a commitment on refinancing the bond structure, you know, and so on, you know, to really see if we can do this and see if we can fit it in the budget. You know, the, you know, we can't, I don't know that we can vote tonight, and I think it's very close if we did vote, but I don't know if we, you know, that we'd have to get into a conference and so on. So I think that maybe we can have a little more serious conversation on this and maybe look at alternative methods, whether it's B, whether it's other sources of income to move forward with. So, you know, I just feel committed to the process and I don't know that we can get it achieved in this short time, right, as we speak.
Yeah, Mr. Madison raises a good point, and it's a point that I think we've kicked around. And I don't know how we should go about this, but I think we need to look at getting the seeds planted for a foundation. And how, how would you, you know, approach that? Would we get, you know, more people who are interested in finance involved, maybe out of that group? We would find somebody to, you know, be, to lead the charge for a foundation. I mean, I don't know how we go about starting one. I worked for some, and I know that's, you know, but, and I don't know that we need to answer that tonight because we're not really on that topic, but maybe, maybe that could be a charge we could give the finance committee. I don't know.
He's out there already like that. And, you know, I think we just have to communicate with other districts like we would. We have Vuda, you know, we have that connection. You know, Naperville has a very strong program like this, and that's why I've talked to a couple of them. So I think again, there's, you know, we're not, we're not inventing something.
Foundations generally, foundations generally get started on two fronts. One, there's usually some type of a, a charge from a particular governing body like the school board. And we have one, but it's not been, you know, active in supporting some of our programs. It's not been some things, but it's not been, you know, actively pursuing. The other thing is you have to have, usually most successful foundations have a large endowment, a large revenue source, a large, I'm talking large, multi-million dollar bank account, you know, where they live off the interest basically over a period of time. Most foundations also have a strategic focus. Some of them it's the arts, some of them it's athletics, some of them it is technology. I personally have experienced that in the past. And what they usually do is they give seed money for initiatives. And they, and they do not usually pay for it in the long term or over year after year after year. Foundations generally provide scholarships, grants, one-time type grants. That is how I've seen successful foundations work in school districts or even at the college level. Or they do some type of a capital campaign for a very targeting purpose, whether it's college, whether it's high school, or K-12, whatever it is. So those foundations exist, but it usually is a very strategic conversation at the governing level. And then the charge goes out and we, you know, try to draw leaders into that conversation and create some type of an endowment to support that over a period of time. That's how they work.
Okay, so would we expect that maybe when we talk about funding in the community engagement sessions, that maybe this would come up? And maybe, you know, if the seed isn't there, maybe plant the seed and then would you get it going? So I've seen that, so has Mr. Roman, Mr. Paulson, so, okay, cool. So we're on the road then to maybe making something like that happen?
That's not the only avenue, too. So we're going to certainly, we'll certainly suggest that, facilitate and incorporate that in the community sessions. If there's no reason why we can't talk to people in community, one-on-one, to groups, whatever, to also plant the seed, but certainly will recommend to facilitate and integrate a discussion on foundations funding.
Can I, can I try to see whether I'm understanding where we are as a board here, I think? And maybe for the purposes of the people who are in the community who have been engaged on the B-team stuff. So if I kind of know this correctly here, I think there's at least four people here who would say, agree completely with the administrative recommendation to say this, we can't do it in this budget year. And I would guess even among those of us who would very much like to see a way to do it, we also understand that to direct the staff to just do that is problematic perhaps for this year. So maybe that's just something, as Mr. Madison says, that we need to come to grips with and say for, for the 2014, 2015 year, it doesn't look like we can on the fly collectively figure out a way to do this. But I do think the whole discussion about the value that middle school sports has in our community and athletics has in our community, and how well it's being served now and whether it can be improved, is something that we should commit to doing. And I personally would say I would be all over next year making that one of the goals. So perhaps if the people who are involved in the B-team conversation had a sense of assurance that that was going to be something, not necessarily reinstating B-team's as we know it per se, but that taking a comprehensive look at our athletic program to see if we can increase whatever it is that is, seems to be missing now from the middle school program that's, that B-team's provided. I, would we be willing to do that, is what I'm saying. And because I think Dr. Harris is right, we can't just on the fly start manufacturing, you know, goals and solutions.
If you, if you look at the document here, that's why I put 14 bit to explore here. I mean, I didn't elaborate on that. I mean, I, but I am talking about, you know, under the gun, you know, the relationships, comments. Yeah, we do have some things that are, we have to do. Now, and that guard, I can tell you that the middle school athletic directors have already begun their scheduling. I mean, they've started. They've already had the A schedules for all of the sports scheduled, not just B-sports, everything. You know, they're going to play each other all four buildings. They've got West Chicago, Hattaway on every schedule and every activity. So they've already bought into this. Also got two other schools that are considering being part of that rotation. So that's already happened. You know, that, we have to do that. You've heard that before. They're not waiting on the board on that. So that part of it's happened. You know, we can always, you know, move forward accordingly. I have no problem taking a strategic approach and looking at our co-curricular program to maybe kind of make it the middle school level, but also the high school level. Because I don't think we can, yeah, I don't think we can do this in isolation. And I said, why? Because we got other things, as Dr. Rammer said. We'll get people up to the mic, one right after the next, passionate about particular activities if we don't take a comprehensive look at this and do it right over a period of time. And fiscally look at what the revenue streams are and go about this in a, in a very strategic focus. So I have no problem with that. But for the 14, 15-year school year on this isolated topic, that's why I'm where I'm at. And I appreciate the conversation. Do we, do we need to do anything formal on this? We've had this discussion. Will we table it? Do we do anything at this point, or we don't?
No. So let me just clarify before we move away from this, the direction. We're going to break the fee schedule, okay? Back, you know, at the March Board meeting, we will not be increasing the fees, okay, for co-curricular based on this discussion. So it'll be the same for both middle school and high school. We also will not, as a staff, as we're working through the budget, as we are starting to make some decisions on, and quite frankly, when you're chasing 1.3 million, you get staffing. It's FTV, not, no, it's teachers, but, you know, sports staff, whatever it is. That's the only place you find it. And that's where it's at. So we are having to make some efficiency decisions, I would say, now at each academic level, but also at the district office. So there's a combination of things. We will hit that target, you know, we will do that. And then we'll bring regulations here and block, block, block you through attrition. They won't be through RIF or anything like that. So I don't anticipate the board having to, you know, be in the weeds or be on the dance floor, to use Mrs. Jethro's term, on that. We, staff will, we will find, you know, the budget to be able to make this happen through attrition, okay? And work through that. We've already started that, quite frankly. So we know what our target is. I was hoping that would add to it, okay? Because that, that would add more to it. So we've already began that work to where we can try to work on some of those costs and some of those expenditures. So, so therefore, the budget, you know, we're still looking at that 1.2, 1.3 million. That, if I want to clarify, we're not looking for an additional 160,000 and, you know, for this discussion. And I do like the idea of making it more of a strategic focus. I do think we may get some input from the community in the next couple of months on where this is headed, which will help that strategic focus. We might even get some volunteers to join us in that journey, you know, and have parent groups weigh in on this throughout, you know, over a period of time to where we're headed. And I think we have to have, you know, incorporate some of these other things, like I said tonight, lacrosse, swimming, you know, and there's probably a few other things I'm not even thinking about. You know, some other little activities that's not even in the conversation, show choir, fine arts. You know, there's other things where there's pretty significant revenue things going on that we probably need to have that conversation and re-look at everything, and what we do. That in context of this would be fantastic, to my pleasure.
And at one of the H200 meetings, will you share with the community how we struggle with this? Because this is again educating them and how they were so surprised about heterogeneity and, you know, all the things you mentioned. And now they'll all be very surprised as well that we, you already know we don't have meeting boards. And they, when they were kids, they had them. So then just finance and everything you just said about, you know, that whole schedule. You mentioned that, that would really be curious.
The answer is yes. The facilitating team has determined a co-curricular will be part of the presentation at the March, I mean, not the one next week, but the March meeting. It will be part of several things, but we are going to, you know, explain our current co-curricular scenario and also with the current situation, you know, that exists. And the board is considering a comprehensive look at it, at least based on what it turned out. You know, we can certainly share that. And ask if you need a way out.
And can I, can I just ask, is there any way that we could communicate to the people who have talked to us about B-team sports, just kind of what the, where we are? So that there's a uniform understanding of our discussion tonight and where we can? Just thinking about whether you could do that.
Yes, some, yes, I need to think through that. But, yeah, I mean, correct. Yes, yes. But we might do it in a comprehensive fashion and maybe do some type of a boardly discussion summary. Okay? And then we've got them all. So, and I know two of our people here receiving have them all as well. So, and probably ones we haven't even heard from. So therefore, we can share it at the session in March. There's multiple ways over a period of time that we could do that.
Okay, I think we can wrap this up. What do you think? Mr. Rammer's side. Okay, Mr. Roman's side. Okay, we have written reports tonight, monthly financial reports, lawyer report, and question on those written reports from any board members? Okay, reports from board members, committee reports. We already heard about community engagement, but do you have anything you would like to add? Mr. Paulson, Mr. Roman, you know, finance, we heard from you guys earlier. You have more?
In general, I happened to attend a speech program the other day put on by three Sweet North students and their, their coach, Judge Austin. And they, it was just a tremendous performance. And the, the students, the speech team at, I think, both high schools or in the regionals. I mean, you know, it's just, it was a, you know, sometimes we get caught up in the, you know, about the closed session expulsion. There's some real attempt in them in our community, and these kids really did a great job. And it'd be worth, you know, I think it's coming up even this weekend or next weekend. And they'll go to the finals, I know where the North scores, and that's really great. So, you know, there, you know, there's just, again, it's what we're here for. Sometimes we just drag another thing. And then tomorrow, while so long, we're going to spend some technology money. Rodney, Eric and I are going to a one-on-one symposium for, at Leiden High School, West Leiden High School, to talk, to see what they've done in engaging the one-on-one technology.
School, to talk, to see what they've done in engaging the one-on-one technology, you know, tablet to person. And they've had a quite successful, influential leaders in the area, so hopefully we'll gain some insight on that. We might maybe find some money in that.
Any other board reports or board committee reports? Mrs. Watson?
Just real quickly, since you mentioned the one-on-one, I know we all got emails about this, so the public knows. There's a, you know, two-page division meeting, which will actually be focused on one-on-one versus bringing your own technology. Hopefully, a lot of people will attend that, so that would be great. And, you know, if there's somebody from our technology department who wishes to attend and hear what we hear, that would be a good thing, too, so.
Dr. Harris and I attended a roundtable led by the, or intergovernmental meeting with all the groups in Carroll Street. There was a great deal of interest in our community engagement effort. In fact, the city manager was there, he said the mayor had been to our first session and just came back all excited and talked about how wonderful it was. So thank you again to those of you who are, that are responsible for all those, getting all that work done and putting that together. What's interesting, Mr. Kaye Seven is going to have a referendum on the ballot, a no-cost referendum, they're calling it, or no tax rate increase referendum to refurbish their four high schools. What they're going to do is just extend their debt way out. So they presented that. You know, Carroll Street was served by, I don't know, seven school districts and, you know, and the police and fire department were there. But anyway, it was a very good meeting, and those were just the kind of tidbits that I got back. It was held in their beautiful new architecture facility with indoor pool and just amazing off of Gary Avenue. So, anyway, it's just a pleasure to go to those things. And Dr. Harris and I came here with some ideas, like I maybe engage our elected officials and our candidates to do something similar. It'd be very helpful, very valuable. And board reports? Okay. Times for future discussion, technology integration, and community curriculum updates. Any announcements? No announcements? Okay, next regular meeting will be February 26th, a special meeting at seven o'clock at these school service center, followed by a committee of a whole meeting at 7:30 at the school service center. Is there anybody who would like to speak in public comment?
Please have some closing statement, is that okay? Respectful, very respectful closing statement.
Okay, Mrs. Nielsen?
Is that okay? Bottom line, bottom line, I've heard all of what you said, respect totally what everybody said, all your discussions, totally get it. I'm, we're all on the same page here, I know we are. The one biggest thing I have is that the foundation aspect, looking into it, can't pay for a teacher's site, which is the majority of this. So that foundation, wow, that's what I'm saying, we'll do fundraisers for uniforms by, we need help from the board. Love the idea on the goal, on the whole curriculum. I got the half soccer. I want to pony up to 200,000 before the conference. So we can have soccer, we can avoid soccer, and all the high school sports should come in. Absolutely. We're not saying, give it to us and you don't get that for anyone. We're, as far as I'm concerned, all of us, our parents are in this together. So what happens in high school happens. Again, the PMA thing, I wanted to explain, he had said at the meeting that for every million dollars you guys spend, that's like a dollar. So when I quoted him in the four-year, I said, wait a minute, I'm asking 150, 60,000 or it's like a dime, right? He goes, absolutely. So that's why I got the dime aspect, okay? I want to explain that. Dr. Harris, yes, if you could write up an email and explain in what, it's going to have what you, what you guys expect. Obviously awkward to my people, but I don't have everybody. Got a lot of people, but I don't have everybody. And I'm thinking that an email to, because I have to tell you, a lot of parents don't get, they don't understand, how can they not? This seems like a no-brainer to everybody that's been sending you these emails, not necessarily, this seems like a no-brainer. When it was cut, it wasn't, unless we find something else. That wasn't the deal. This was a great program, everybody loved it, so how can they not? You know, so it would help to have something from Dr. Harris's board saying, we are, I'm getting a good vibe from you guys, if you do feel this is important, if you do feel this, we can work this out. Again, us parents are willing to work with it. We want this to happen, too, but we don't want to take it away from anybody else. So, anyway, I want to thank you all, and, oh, yes, I, yes, all, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Nielsen. So now, anybody else? Okay. We have a meeting for closed session tonight. Closed session items are listed for constable action, purchase, or lease of real property, and personal items. May I have a motion to return to closed session?
I will, will you have a closed session?
Goodbye, Mr. Roman. Second. Second, I, Mr. Piamiani, Mr. Stedden, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Piamiani?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cattell?
Yes.
Mrs. Inteher?
Yes, it's the, thank you. There'll be no action after closed session, okay?